Good evening, everybody. And welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, November 19th, 2018. Happy, a couple of days before Thanksgiving. I hope everybody has a safe and happy holiday. This is the Select Board meeting in the Select Board meeting room on the second floor of Groton Town Hall. At 7:00 PM, after I finish reading these announcements, well, after I finish reviewing this agenda for the public, we will do announcements, followed by a public comment period, followed by the Town Manager Report where we will discuss this agenda schedule, plus notify the Town Manager, the Board's intention to begin annual review, consider renewal of the Town Manager's contract, discuss and begin developing annual goals as a Select Board, discuss proposal from Town Manager for housing development of Groton Country Club property. Followed at 7:15, we'll take a break where we are on the agenda with a public hearing on the fiscal year 2019 tax classification hearings, hearing, and I believe we have the Board of Assessors here for that.
Mm-hmm.
And then in other business, we will approve and accept bids on the bond issue dated November 13th, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna ask you to take that up first in the meeting, please.
Then we will be taking that up after the public comment period. Under ongoing issues, we have various items we're tracking, including the Senior Center Building project, proposed policy on major initiative planning, charter approval implementation of new provisions, committee charge for capital planning committee, Route 119 sidewalk installation Florence Roach Elementary School feasibility study, the task force to consider having a full-time 24/7 fire department, library roof repair, highway garage repairs, pepper roll landfill, and the incorporation of OPEB funding to the operational budget. We will perhaps have some Select Board liaison reports, and then we have three minutes scheduled to be approved tonight. With that, are there any announcements from the Board or the Town Manager?
I have one, Mr., I have two questions, Chairman. Just to announce, with the Thanksgiving holiday on Thursday, it's been our procedure and process to close Town Hall on Friday. Employees will be taking earned time off on that day, but there will be no Town Hall office hours this Friday. In addition to that, because of the holiday, the Board ordinarily does not meet the Monday after Thanksgiving, so your next meeting will be the first week of December, which I believe is the fourth.
We, that should be discussed, I would think.
We have, because of the posting and the ability to me to get a packet together, I don't have enough time to get it done this week.
We generally, as a timing issue, we can't get a packet together because we're missing Thursday and Fridays.
Okay. I hope that in the future, if we know that, it would help me to know further advance of that.
Oh, I'm sorry, just, we never met the Monday after Thanksgiving. I apologize.
I've never been on the Board since last Thanksgiving, and I don't remember this.
I apologize. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Josh, you have a comment?
Yeah. I've been on the Board a long time. I don't recall that practice, to be honest with you, unless...
I recall it two years ago.
I know we just, we just did not meet last week due to Veterans Day.
Public holiday, right.
And that Monday after Thanksgiving is not a holiday. I really think we should be meeting. Board wants a meeting, we'll meet.
Do you think there's enough to put on, if you've come up with enough to put on the agenda, I can't, that you can't wait until the phone rings?
So...
We won't get the opportunity to see ours, just read ahead and plan ahead to be prepared for the meeting.
Well, there's, there are some things that have been put off for a while that we certainly could move forward.
Would it make sense for us to meet to discuss our goals? I think we did that perhaps last year in that meeting. It doesn't need a lot of preparation.
All right, tell you what, we're gonna, we'll, we'll put this under, back under other business, and we'll review it then to discuss, all right?
Good idea.
And, I'm sorry, what date is that?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, thank you. All right, I've got it written down. All right, any other announcements from members of the Board?
Yes.
John Geiger.
On Friday afternoon, we hosted PAC-12, a group of anxious to learn about how government in Groton works, from West Groton, here in this room. And they had a very nice visit. They were talkative. They're led by Kevin Kennedy, and it was great to see them moving through the scout process.
Excellent, thank you. We have a very involved scouting program here in town, and it's great to see them getting even more involved. Any other announcements from the members of the Board? Public comment period. Any of you from the public? I see one hand raised. Please grab a microphone.
Thank you. So, the recent town election was a question about regard to marijuana, and it seemed like the question was challenging to a lot of people, and many of the people that I spoke with, when they learned what yes men or no men, told me that they actually voted incorrectly. Fall talk about Groton, see that is substantiated by other people as well. And I think that it's a shame because it's government's job to make sure that people are educated and cast responsible vote. I think that it was preventable with perhaps a differently written, perhaps better viewed question. And I'd like to know the Board's thoughts as to whether or not they agreed that the question was challenging, and whether they believe that there is a way to assure that that doesn't happen again.
So, I'll speak as to the process, because I went back and reviewed the process upon hearing the academic challenge from Mr. Patropolis, and we validated that the town meeting vote was held as a precipitous event towards this, and that several discussions were had on the ballot questions. The ballot question itself, after being revised by Town Council to be legal, was sent to the Attorney General to assure that it was legal. And then there were two members on this Board that, one on each side, that reviewed that to, my opinion, validate the yes or no sides of the equations. And so, I'm not sure that there's anything that could have been done to predict confusion amongst the populace. I do know that we did go back and ask Town Council for an opinion, are there any issues or concerns from a legal standpoint regarding the vote, and that was issued as a non, a non, no problem, especially in light of the Attorney General's approval of the ballot question itself. So, the Board appears to have done his due diligence. If there were concerns about the question, it would've been nice that they had been brought up in the month prior to the question going to ballot. But, you know, here we are today, and all we can hope is that this goes forward and we can move on with this business.
Thank you. Well, it wasn't just really actually suggesting that there was anything legally wrong with the question. I was really asking a more practical question of, could it have been written better, in a more understandable fashion? And that's really the thing that I'd like your opinion about, and certainly others who went down and suggested, there are probably ways that we could assure that that doesn't happen in the future.
Well, I welcome all that input, and encourage people to come to this meeting so that they can give us that input and help us revise those questions accordingly. Becky Klein, you have a statement.
Yeah, I was actually gonna speak about this. I, I was aware that there was a lot of public discussion on social media about the wording of the ballot question, and I completely agree that it was very confusingly worded. We did, as Barry just said, review our process. The, the question was drafted by our Town Council following guidance published in the laws, and then it was sent to the Attorney General for approval and received approval. Whether it could have been written better or not, I think, is an unknown question, because I think perhaps there would have been some flexibility had we been involved. We didn't realize that. We were under some time constraints on this. The lesson for me, I think, is that no matter what we do, and how much discussion we have had at the Board level, or in the Town Hall level, or even, you know, having been at town meeting and feeling like we've really discussed this a lot in public, there can never be too much attempt to help people understand what we're doing. And there are, the great majority of our citizens, believe it or not, are not watching our meetings on television, and as we know, only a small percentage come to town meetings. So, the lesson for me is to work harder at explaining what we know is going to be presented to voters, hopefully, in a way that alerts people ahead of time and helps them to understand things. There was one question raised, Mark, that I was, would like you to still clarify. It was pointed out that on the ballot itself, in contrast to the state ballot questions, where you see the question and you see a sentence that says, "A yes vote means such and such, and a no vote means such and such," or "A yes vote will lead to such and such, and a no vote will lead to such and such." There was none, there was, that was not on our state ballot. I think you said that it has been your understanding in the past that we are not actually allowed to put that on?
My understanding, and I'll confirm this with the Town Clerk, and I have a chance to talk to him today, is that you cannot put additional information on the town ballot question. It has to be the specific question itself. But I will, I will look that up and confirm if...
But all the more reason then for us to remember that in the future, ballot questions that we are proposing ourselves, we really have an obligation to do a lot of education before the vote about what it means.
If people aren't watching us, and they aren't attending town meeting, and they aren't reading the paper, and they aren't reading the pamphlet we sent out, I look forward to hearing more ideas on, on how we can get the word out, because I think, I think you've approached a very challenging subject, which...
Right.
There may not, we can't, you know, you can put all the water out there in the world, but if the horse isn't gonna come and drink it, you know, what are we gonna do? You know, we can shop at Facebook, we can shop at Twitter, but they're not subscribed to those, they're not gonna see it.
Well, that, that does help. And, and I think it's also important to, for everyone to know, again, we were under time constraints. We didn't even approve the wording of the handout until after early voting had started. So, although, interestingly enough, we did not get any comments back during the early voting period questioning it, so I don't know what that says.
Yeah, in the future, it'd be nice not to have to be so rushed, so we do have time to rush to do all these things properly, but that didn't happen. Josh, I apologize for interrupting you.
No, that's fine. I think to Jack's point, we're very close to this issue, for any issue that's gonna be on a ballot, or a town meeting vote. And while this Board may understand it, and some department heads certainly may understand what the issue is that's being brought up, in the future, to correct the situation, what we may wanna do is take the writing that is in draft form, and put it in front of a dozen people, put it in front of four seniors, put it in front of some young parents, put it in front of people, and say, "Do you understand what yes, and do you understand what no means?" And if they come back and they say, "I don't have a clue what this means," then we haven't done the job of writing the question, whether it's Town Council or us, in a fashion that meets the voters' needs. So, I know we were in a rushed fashion this time around due to time constraints, but moving forward, just 'cause you're in a rush, doesn't mean that you have to move forward with something that isn't ready for primetime. And I did similarly have people approach me, not understanding what they were voting for, and to me, I shrugged my shoulders, and it's made complete sense to me, but you gotta realize, it's a perspective issue.
Thank you, Josh.
What, what, excuse me. Just second, Peter, I see your hand, apologies. The idea of a, of a focus group is a very good idea. Would that be spawned by the clerk? The Town Clerk? Would that be spawned by the Board of Selectmen?
Hey, that's a good question. The, the way, the way that happens is, the Board of Selectmen are the ones that call for the, Select Board are the ones that call for the, call for the election, so I think it should be the Select Board. Town Clerk just runs the election.
So, we'll, we'll put that idea as a, I don't know, it would be a standing committee, I mean, I don't know, what's your, we'll have to talk about how to structure that. I think it's a great, I think it's a great idea to try to solve this with at least an idea that we're trying to get somewhere, that if these user groups, quote-unquote representatives, we got some idea that it's, it's valid.
Yeah, and it has to go quick. I mean, this is, here it isn't draft...
That's the challenge. Every time you add another committee, another system, you're gonna slow down the process. If we had a lot more time, 100% agree. And, but if you get some things in place ahead of the needing that time, then it's possible. If these people are willing to meet on a lark, or they're willing, we can get these committees together ad hoc, I don't know what the, what the situation is. I don't know what the legality is either. If they have to be open committees, you know, we have other challenges, so we'll have to look at that. But that's a great idea, Josh, and I'll put it on an agenda for the, for the future, soon.
Look to your right.
Oh, Mr. Geiger, sorry, Peter.
We're getting it, okay? Certainly, almost everything I write today and could look at tomorrow, hindsight being what it is, I can find something that I can make a little better. So, yes, I think, in hindsight, maybe it could've been worded a little bit differently. The difficulty in this one is that, and I, and I hope people will understand it, what was on that ballot was the exact words that had to be changed in the bylaw itself, and that's why it went to the Attorney General, and we couldn't, like, freelance write it, because those words had to fit into that bylaw, and that bylaw had to meet the state requirements to, to fulfill what the voter had asked us to do. It's a pretty unusual situation. It doesn't, something like that doesn't come up very often, and we've been through this one, and I'm sure we'll be smarter and wiser and so forth, if we have another one like this.
Well, if one person had changed their mind at town meeting, we wouldn't be having this discussion right now. Now, now...
See, that is a man. I'm sorry, Art, Peter had his hand up next. Thank you.
I certainly emphasize the position you're in, in trying to craft a question and get the message out to people in town. I think, in general, to Josh's point, I think people in town are always in touch with what's going on, or in tune with what's going on here, or before you. I think in general, this issue, there had been a lot of knowledge out there about that. I think the whole topic of marijuana legalization of marijuana, certainly since the November 16 state referendum, I think it was fairly well-known to people. I think how our local process was impacting that was not so well-known. So, maybe one of the takeaways for the Board to consider at some point in the future, certainly not now, is that this may be an issue worthy of revisiting at some point, for how the town is going to address this going forward, and, you know, now, I think, understanding that people have a better understanding of what that's gonna be, it may be something that's worth revisiting.
I need to pause for a moment. We need to open a public hearing, and then, and then defer the public hearing for a little bit.
Mr. Chairman, legal notice, Town of Groton tax classification hearing. The Select Board has scheduled the public hearing with the Board of Assessors within its regular Select Board meeting on Monday, November 19th, 2018, at 7:15 PM at the Groton Town Hall, 173 Main Street, second floor meeting room. The purpose of this hearing is to receive comments on the issue of adopting a tax levy percentage for fiscal year 2019. All interested parties are encouraged to attend Groton Select Board. I'd ask the Board to open the public hearing.
So, move, I move we open the public hearing on taxes classification for fiscal year 2019?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move that we...
No, thank you.
I move that we delay the public hearing to be continued at the conclusion of the public comment period.
We'll actually conclude it after we accept the bond rates, if that's okay.
At, I'll withdraw my motion. I move that we suspend the public hearing and reconvene at the conclusion based on the Chair's discretion.
I second.
All right, great. It's all on me. Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Art, I apologize. And this will be the last comment, then move on to the bond...
I have to say that I agree with the Jack's comment. To me, my wife, it was confusing enough that she voted one way, and I voted the other.
And you both agree.
And I won't tell you which way was which. In addition, I worked at the polls that day, and we had, I had several people come up to me and say, "It looked like those bullets were contradictory." And I looked at them, I didn't comment, but, "Well, you know, you're gonna have to try to interpret." I couldn't interpret. And so, there was confusion at the polls because of that, and I don't, I don't know what you can do about it, but I have to agree with Jack's statement, that people were confused. Thank you. That was before I took the tumble down the stairs, well, just so you know.
Sure, it was. Okay, now we'll go on to other business and do the agenda for approval and accept bids on bond issues dated November 13th, 2018. Following that, we'll reconvene in the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, our Treasurer and our Financial Advisors are here tonight. I ask you guys to sit up here at the table. As you know, we went out to bond on the $7.6 million issue for the Senior Center and other issues. We received a very favorable rate of 3.24%. We're very pleased with that, and we're here tonight to have the Board formally adopt that, and we ask our Financial Advisors to be here tonight to answer any questions that the Board may have, because I know we did raise some questions at the last meeting, and so, instead of Mike and I trying to answer it, we brought Kristy, who is our expert. So, that said, I'll turn it over to Mike.
Kristy Jankowski from the Bankers, are part of the team of our Financial Advisors out there, and two weeks ago at your meeting, you authorized me to go out to bid for all of this. We did, and we had a very favorable result, and I'd ask Kristy if she'd speak to that, because we only do this every three or four or five years, and I think it's important to, for you to hear exactly what happened.
Thank you for having me out tonight. Myself and Clark Rauw from our office worked on this deal together with everybody here for the Town of Groton. As Mark mentioned, you did have a very favorable rate. We were projecting 3.5% interest rate, and you ended up below that at the 3.24, which was excellent. AAA rating certainly helps in those situations, which you flew through that process, and that was wonderful. There were a total of six bids received. The winner was from Robert W. Baird, out of New Jersey, and they were the lowest true interest cost on that. The vote that you previously took was for the offering amount, which we distributed to all of the potential bidders. That was in the amount of $7,760,000. You've pre, the Select Board previously took a vote regarding premium. Due to the changes with Municipal Modernization Act, if a premium is received, which is very common these days, you're able to roll back the par amount of the bond, so you technically issue less than you would have, because they are gifting you the additional funds. That brought the total down to $7,730,000, and that is what you'll be taking the vote on today, is, is the actual costs that were received, as well as the issuance, I'm sorry, as well as the interest rate. I can give some more information, I'm not sure how detailed you want me to get tonight, as far as the structure. There were three pieces total that were included in this bond issue. You had the Senior Center, Lost Lake, and also the Fire Truck. With the Fire Truck and Lost Lake, we ran those as a simple level principal structure. The Senior Center, we got a little bit more creative with that, and that was in order to achieve a certain tax rate impact. So, it was 25 cents that we were trying to mark for. We also considered future projects, the library roof...
DPW garage.
Thank you, as well as the DPW garage. So, in our projections, we were able to structure the Senior Center to accommodate those future projects into the schedule, so that we made some room for when those are hopefully approved by the taxpayers, and you go out to bond. We can fit that in nicely with having a more even tax rate impact, rather than, you know, big spikes, and having it fluctuate from year to year. Any questions for me?
What is the Board, what is the Board actually voting to do this evening, so they know exactly what's going on?
Sure. So, that you've probably received in your packet is quite a long vote. If you'd like me to quickly summarize it for you, and you can make a motion on that. As I stated, it does state the seven point, I'm sorry, $7,730,232.31 was issued by the Town of Groton. The sale date was on November, I'm sorry, 12th?
Nineteenth.
Sorry, 13th. Yes, Tuesday, November 13th. It will be dated on November 27th. That is the date that the funds will arrive in the Baytown's bank account. The vote here outlines the interest rate that was received, and also will detail the maturity schedule, the final schedule that was done for those three purposes. It is having you acknowledge that you will undertake all of the continuing disclosure requirements, making sure that they are readily available in the future, as you've done for past bond issues that the Town has issued. And it would just be a vote of the Select Board to sign off on this information.
This time, I did put the vote in your packet.
So, it's possible to some, if they're looking at the schedule, can you put the schedule of a year or two, interest rates and payments? Mike get confused as to why there's so much erratic variation between the principal amounts, as well as the interest rates. Can, I know it's part of that structure you discussed, can you elaborate on that just a little bit more?
Absolutely. So, with bond issues, if you wanna compare it to a home mortgage, where you have one rate for, say, 30 years, that is, that's your rate for the entire time. Bond issues are, they're, they're small. Each maturity is assigned its own interest rate, which is what you see here. So, you can see it starting with the higher 5% coupons. I believe the lowest was at 3% when you get to year 2029. That results in the true interest cost, so that average of the 3.24. So, you might look at that and say, "How did we end up so low, when we clearly have so many 5% coupons on that front end of the yield curve?" As far as the structure of the par amounts of those principal payments, as I mentioned, for the two purposes that were not excluded, those we ran as level principal, meaning that your principal stays relatively the same throughout the life of the issue, interest decreasing as the years, you know, with each maturity payment. And then, the difference there with the Senior Center, it was that we tried to structure it so that the tax rate impact would be level. So, we had a target number for fiscal year 2020 of where we needed to be in order to achieve that tax rate impact. We met that, and from there, there are certain things we have to track on our end to make sure that it's legally accurate. Level debt is your standard schedule that you can run, and as long as we had the average life of the entire issue finishing equal to, or before what it would be if we did it just the standard level debt, you're allowed to do that. And that is what we, we did. We took advantage of that, so that we could create a level tax rate for this issue, and considering the future issues that you'd like to put through.
All right, thank you. Allison.
So, I apologize, I'm still struggling with this.
Sure.
Am I kind of interpreting correctly that at some point, a year was selected, and that the payments for this will drop down, so that the DPW and the library roof can then kind of come on board?
Yes. Bear with me for one second as I pull up the schedule. So, we were targeting, 2020 was the first year that this impact would get up to that 25 cent tax rate impact that I had mentioned, and what we...
Is there, I'm sorry, is there something in our packet that I should be looking at to make this?
Yes. Are you, are this?
Yep.
It's in, that is...
But that is, we're talking all about...
Are we looking at a different page on the...
But that's okay. I'll keep going, you don't figure it out.
Sure. And so, and then in 2021 is when we were projecting that perhaps the Highway Garage and Library Roof would come into play, and that you would start paying debt service on those items, and so, we had fit that in there. So, looking at the schedule for just the Senior Center, you have a relatively small principal payment going up to 2024, which allows us to add in some higher payments for those new projects, early, in those early years of when we would be issuing those items, and then increasing there. So, it's more of a step up in the tax rate gradually than one big impact when you add in all of these projects. Is that helpful?
It's a schedule on page 27 that she's referring to in your packet. I have it up on the screen.
And that's, but that's just for the Senior Center?
Correct.
Is the one called issue summary for all three funds?
That's for all three purposes, yes.
That's this one here?
Mm-hmm. And for our purposes of figuring out the tax rate... And for our purposes of figuring out the tax rate, we were really only looking at the senior center, since that was the one that was excluded from Prop 2 and 1/2. So, that's the schedule where we try to fit it into.
Because we have with, we have non-excluded debt and excluded debt that we're going to go bond with.
Correct.
So, there's, there's a, some variation in the structuring.
So, I'm going to kind of step back, I guess, after saying this. I'm, it has nothing to do with you guys, but-
Sure.
I'm extremely frustrated with what appears to be an ongoing persistence in our process of assuming that the next project is definitely going to be a go. And, and I'm very uncomfortable with the idea that somehow behind the scenes, this has been manipulated so that we can at some point accommodate that without seeing any kind of jump. You know, effectively, we've, it seems like we're setting the stage for some future year at town meeting to be able to stand up and say, well, because of the way the senior center was structured, we can now afford the DPW and the library roof without any substantive increase in your tax payment. And I am so incredibly uncomfortable with that concept and that approach.
Is, is-
Kind of my-
May I address that, Mr. Chairman? You know-
You may not want to.
Well, I definitely want to, because I'm the one that planned it this way. I'm the one that worked with the financial advisors. We have a capital plan. We have, we have projects that are coming up, and we try to plan for them with the least impact to the taxpayers. And if we didn't plan for that, I'd ask you to terminate me as the town manager, because I'm not planning for the future. My job is to plan for the future. We have excellent financial advice that allows us to plan, and we plan. If those projects don't pass, they don't pass, and we go with the schedule. But if we don't plan for those projects, it has a significant impact on the taxpayers, and we're trying to make it as taxpayer-friendly as possible. We just did our job. If you're not comfortable with the job that we did, I'll take full responsibility for that. But I did my job, and I did it for that very reason. We have a capital plan that Wall Street looked at when they rated our bond rating that said we have great capital planning and great financial planning, and it's because of issues like this that we got that rating. So, I'm very comfortable with the way we did this. If the taxpayers don't want to support a library roof or a DPW garage, don't support it. We're still going to have to pay this debt service, but at least we're planning to minimize the impact if they decide to go forward. I'm very comfortable with that process.
I think I would probably be more comfortable with it if I felt it were happening in a manner that were obvious to the taxpayers and the voters.
Becky, I think you had your next one. We'll go to Josh.
Right. I was going to ask a different question, but I'm just going to follow up a little bit with this. I agree with Allison's last comment, and I think the way that, one of the ways that we can help it become more obvious to the taxpayers is, I think this discussion speaks to the importance of a capital planning committee and a better job of publicizing the capital plan, which Mark correctly says we do have a capital plan, but it didn't, has not been, I think, well-publicized or discussed in public in ways that people would really have a way of understanding it. And that's why I think we really do need to proceed with a capital planning committee. And I do have another comment, but I'll wait till the end of this particular discussion.
May I ask a question? Who are the people that are supposed to be aware of this if the people at Town Meeting are the only people that can approve funds?
I'm, I'm sorry, what's your question?
You want to get more word out there, but the only people who have the authority to, to, to do, to any funding in our town, any money spending at all, is Town Meeting.
Mm-hmm.
If-
But I think, and-
I'm just, that's what I'm, I mean, I'm asking, is, are you talking beyond the Town Meeting voter? We need to make sure people that aren't at Town Meeting, we need to do a better job of, of educating Town Meeting. What's the, what's the, what's the parameters?
No, I think that, that there's two separate things going on here. Mark referred to a capital plan, and that's part of what is driving his attempt to plan for future debt. I don't think that most citizens are aware of the capital plan. I believe, I saw it for the first time last January, my first year budget cycle on the board. My recollection is that we, as a board, did not discuss that at great length in, in, in public. The Town Meeting votes on a single proposal that's being presented, and often it is presented along with information that, well, this will be able, we'll be able to afford this without a rate increase, in part because of planning that's been done ahead of time. I think what Allison's point is that I agreed with is, we could do a better job of informing the public in that planning ahead of time about what our capital plan has in it. I don't think that Joe Q. Citizen at this point, or Jane Q. Citizen, has any clue what's in our capital plan.
So, I will say that we discussed capital plan at length last year. In fact, there are many items regarding highway trucks and what to do with the transfer station, other things that we questioned and went, asked for changes to do so. It might be useful to review those items, and I know that we'll have a big discussion on that again. This time, it is part of the budget planning cycle. It is part of the discussion cycle, and it is reviewed by both the FinCon and the Board of Selectmen at length. I would encourage more, perhaps we need to be a little more explicit about it and put it as a higher agenda item in this year's discussions, and maybe we can have, we can have a full session just talking about that. I apologize, we're going way out of track, you guys here, but Josh had a, had a comment.
Yeah. I'll, I'll try and get the four thoughts that are on my mind out separately. I'll do the best I can do here. First of all, Becky pulled right from my brain exactly what I was going to say concerning the capital planning committee, and that's one of the things I think that we could discuss at a meeting the Monday after Thanksgiving. We've been putting that off for a while. I understand Allison's point. I don't completely agree with her, but I understand the concept of, of what she's concerned about with setting aside capacity for future projects. And in absence of a capital planning committee, the town manager's job is to mellow with chikory or cushion things for the future to allow for projects that may be within the capital plan. And that the general public's lack of knowledge of, of what may be in the future, it's there. The capital plan's out there for anybody to look at at any given time. We have to replace police cruisers, fire engines, frontline plow trucks, any number of things on a reoccurring basis. And it's his job to do things. But I think where the fundamental flaw exists in the way things are currently done is, because Mark is the town manager, and it wouldn't matter if it was Mark or somebody else, in absence of a capital planning committee, Mark needs to be the one who's the chief advocate for whatever is proposed, whether it's a new senior center, a fire station, a DPW garage, whatever. And oftentimes, through the department heads, the seed gets planted in Mark's mind, and then Mark comes up with the scenario in order to bring it forward to finance it. And I think that because Mark's so close to the issue as the chief proponent for it, screams for the reason why to have a capital planning committee, in order to be the checks and balances between the town manager and the public. So, with that being said, everything that these folks are here for tonight are things that Town Meeting approved, and now here we are with a favorable rate, and congratulations on coming in a quarter or point under what we had anticipated. So, that's my thought process, and I hope it made sense. At least it did to me.
Works.
Just, just one, one follow-up, if I may. The charter requires the town managers put together the capital plan, so I'm not sure how you've mailed the capital planning committee, but we'll put that on next Monday's agenda.
Yeah, my other question.
Sure.
My other question.
No, next Monday.
This is-
Thanksgiving's Thursday.
This shows my total lack of knowledge of your field, but where, the person that is buying these bonds is, this sounds like an individual. Is it, is it a single person, or is it a company?
No, it's a, it's a company, and they'll resell it on the secondary market.
Okay, so, we're not just like doing business with-
Joseph down the road.
With Robert Baird himself.
No, we're not.
Thank you.
As Kristy said a few, a few minutes ago, the $7 million plus is broken up into all these individual little notes.
We don't have to sign every single one of them.
Yes, you do. If you don't have to do it, you can do it at your leisure, but before tomorrow morning.
Well, she gave it to me while I'm on my way into Boston. Turn it in for you.
Do all of us need to sign every page?
We need three, three, at least three signatures on every page.
Allison, yeah.
Mark, does, does the planning for future capital projects take into account school district needs as well, or is it just municipal?
Municipal needs, because the, the largeness of the anticipated flow row for the school budget is just way outside of anything we can do to control the tax rate. So, we're planning on the town projects.
Theoretically, by controlling the town, that theoretically gives room for, but considering that, that we can't approve, we can't, we can't guide, we can't do a debt decision for the, for the, for the, for the schools, so we can't really affect that, right? I mean, how, how would you, how would you plan for that?
I think it's disingenuous to be manipulating this set of financing to make room for future municipal capital needs, if we're not willing to do the same thing to accommodate this school district's capital plan that's out there on the same standing and same pedestal that ours is.
I would argue that they have the same tools available then that we do, and that we do do that, and I don't think we should be using inflammatory words like manipulating when we're, when we're trying to adjust a financial scheme that is valid, to, to plan something that may or may not happen. We did put together a capital fund to fund stabilization, to fund capital for the schools, and I don't know of any other mechanism that we can start to hedge against the incoming, but it's certainly worth having a perhaps workshop discussion to understand that item, because it's something that you bring up consistently as you feel we're not working on that, so let's have a workshop to sit down and hammer that out. How do we plan for the schools, what, what we, what we know is coming down the pipe, rather than every week, get up here and complain about it, let's do something about it.
Absolutely.
Marlena? Yeah, we need a microphone.
Just a quick question. One of the trials in the, the DPW garage or the library, and we're not arguing with the merits of the need for those, but if those aren't approved at Town Meeting, how does that specifically affect us? We're borrowing the money, the money's set aside, and pay it off now?
No.
No.
The money's not borrowed, the money, the money's not borrowed, the money's not been issued. It allows us to feed it into the structure to maintain the tax rate the same by, if we were to borrow more money.
Could you-
Right.
Correct. Could you clarify, there are three things included in this. The senior center, the new fire truck? The one that arrived two weeks ago?
Yes.
And-
Lost Lake Fire Suppression System.
The fire suppression system, okay. All things, we already voted.
There's nothing included that has not been approved.
All we did was plan a schedule so that if additional bonding is done, it minimizes the impact to the taxpayers. That's all we did.
And the way we've been paying for those things that happened in previous years was through short-term borrowing, through bands on a year-over-year basis. And right now, what we're doing is we're permanently bonding those two other things, the fire truck and the Lost Lake Fire Suppression System, along with the senior center, and one large bondage. Is that-
That is accurate, and it makes it a much more efficient issue, having those other pieces included.
Because we can see those short-term rates hitting close to this 3.25 shortly, and we couldn't risk it.
Are we ready for a motion on this?
Yeah, I need to ask legally, do we need to read the entire thing, including the table?
I, I don't think you do. I think you can approve the motion as presented. Kristy, correct me if I'm wrong.
That is correct.
So, we do, but we should at least put the, so the, the dollar value of 7, 730, 23231? And-
Seven million, 380,000 on the board deal, so.
But the voted, the vote you've got to sign is 738. You're right, you're right. I apologize. You're right. Yeah, which is, which is an accrued interest.
It's two pages.
Where's, is this page 17?
This is page 18. Who would like to volunteer, since I read the last one?
I'll be there.
Anybody want to volunteer to do this one?
I'd be happy to do it. Would you like me to?
Please, thank you.
The vote of the Select Board. Am I to say I move this?
Uh, what I would do is I would say, I'm going to read this into the record, then we're going to, then we're going to move the vote on it.
Okay, I'm going to read this into the record. I, the clerk of the Select Board of the Town of Groton, Massachusetts, parentheses, the town, certified that at a meeting of the board held November 19th, 2018, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified, and at which a quorum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the board in my custody. Voted that the sale of the $7,380,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2018 bonds of the town dated November 27th, 2018, parentheses, the bonds, to Robert W. Baird and Company Incorporated at the price of $7,730,232.31 and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds shall be payable on November 15th of the year, and in the principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rates as follows, and there is a large chart. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated November 1st, 2018, and a final official statement dated November 13th, 2018, parentheses, the official statement, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that the bonds shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as are set forth in the official statement. Further voted that the town treasurer and the Select Board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C2-12 in such form as may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures in such form as the town treasurer and bond counsel deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds. Further voted that each member of the Select Board, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them, or any of them, to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certified that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, parentheses, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes, end parentheses, was filed with the town clerk, and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General as set forth in 940CMR 29.03, parentheses, 2, Section B, at least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays, prior to the time of the meeting, and remained so posted at the time of the meeting, that no deliberations or decision in connection with the sale of the bonds were taken in executive session, all in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 30A, subsection 18 to 25, as amended, dated November 19th, 2018.
Thank you for that heroic work, Becky. So, we have a, it's been read in the record. Can we have a motion to accordingly validate these one, two, three, four, five, six votes?
I, I, as the clerk, will second the motion.
Okay, so there's been a motion for, made by myself and seconded. Any further discussion regarding these items? Is everybody clear on what we're voting on? In doing so, we'll approve and do the final checkmark, rather than our signatures of the sale of the bonds, and allow them to be, allow the money to be funded and issued, the bonds to be issued. Is that accurate? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Nay.
Any abstentions? I heard that for one. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mike, you want to leave those with me? I'll have the board sign them tonight and get them to you first in the morning.
Mr. Chairman, I ask the board to reopen the public hearing for the tax classification.
Thank you, yes. So, uh, I'll take a motion to reopen the public hearing.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, public hearing is now open on the tax fiscal twenty nineteen cla- tax classification hearing. Uh, who's the current chair of the Board of Assessors? Yeah, well, it's just, it's easier for the, for the, for the cameras and the public, please.
I have to spread out my scroll.
Thank you. Has anyone on the board that might be new to this process, unclear of what this does or what this, this is why we do this?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, would you mind, would you mind explaining the purpose of this?
Yes, I will. Uh, first of all, my name is Garrett Bowles, I'm the chairman of the Board of Assessors. And I want, would like to start by explaining this piece of paper, which I think you have in electronic form on the laptops.
He called it gobbledygook, so, yes.
Yep.
Yes, which, which?
All the gobbledygook, which I made small this year.
I have it on paper.
Remove my glasses. What this, what this page does and the pages that follow is it basically walks you through proposition two and a half as it affects how the ca- tax rate is actually calculated for this year's tax rate for Groton. The information, the references I'm making here are two documents, uh, published by the Department of Revenue, um, where we get the actual figures that we use to calculate the tax rate. So the way proposition two and a half works, it's a, it's a cap on levies. And if you go to the top of the page, um, you start out with last year's levy limit, which is last year's tax levy backing out last year's debt service. You then take, what the state does when they give us the levy limit sheet is they'll take that figure, which in this case is twenty-nine million, three hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and twenty-four, and they'll multiply, take two and a half percent of that and that, that's the figure they give you to put in the levy that you're allowed under Prop two and a half. Now, it so happens this year, the, there's a little bit, uh, the actual amount that was voted in the budget is, is, uh, twen- uh, tw- is point two five percent lower than the two and a half, so it's two point two five percent. So you add that back in, that goes on top of last year's levy limit. The five hundred, next comes the new growth, that's in the other exa- uh, that's the other, um, exception, the two and a half allows an increase in the levy limit unless it's excluded debt. It's the new growth, which is the value of new construction times last year's tax rate. And the idea is, uh, behind that is that if you build new structures in the community, the town has to spend money on the infrastructure to support those and if you didn't allow a certain growth in the levy to help support that infrastr- the, the service, those new properties, you'd end up falling behind. So that, uh, that new growth would change every year, it's totally dependent on what, on, uh, non-exempt property construction. So when you sum all of those, you come up with the levy limit for fiscal two thousand nineteen, what they call the levy limit, which is not the tax levy. That you then add to the levy limit from the DE one form, which is the debt exclusion schedule, of the total of all of the costs for the municipal bonds for the fiscal year. And it so happens that this year it's one million, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. The sum total of the levy limit plus this year's excluded debt payments gives you your levy and that is what you'll see in the upper right-hand corner of the tax recap sheet, which you'll have to, um, which I don't know if you have that in your, uh, records, but that, that is the levy that, um, that you're going to raise. And the difference between that and the total amount would be things that are raised not from real and personal property taxes, from fees and other non-tax income, at least property tax income. Now, it's, from there, it's basically a simple gra- grammar school division problem. You have your levy of thirty-two million, three hundred and fifty-one thousand, sixty-three dollars. You have the total value of all the property in the community, which, um, is one billion, six eighty-one, nine twenty-two, nine, ninety-six for the residential class and a hundred and four million, three twenty-three, fi- eight hundred and fifty-three thousand for the com- commerce, total of commercial, industrial and personal property. And together, that gives you your tax base and then you simply divide thirty, thirty-two million, three fifty-one, oh sixty-three into that one billion, seven eighty-six, two forty-six, eight forty-nine and that gives you the rate you need per thousand dollars of assessed valuation to impose in order to collect that thirty-two million dollars. So it's, it's fairly simple once you know all the steps. Now, what you're doing here tonight is you're allowed to shift some of that levy over from the residential class to, um, the non-residential class properties. And you're allowed to shift an amount up to fifty percent. On, on, you're allowed to shift an amount of levy which would cause the tax rate on the commercial, industrial, personal property to go up to fifty perc- a hundred and fifty percent of what they would have been if you didn't classify. And that cha- that's something which is different for every community. And this is a community which ninety-four point one six percent of the tax base is residential. So the amount that you're shifting, i- in other words, so what happens is it doesn't take very much shifted off of the residential side because proportionally it's so much larger than the commercial side to make the commercial, to get to that hundred and fifty percent. And that's, um, that's essentially what these charts show. Now, most, historically, most communities that classify, the larger cities have large commercial tax bases like Boston and Cambridge and, um, they, or the, when it, when classification first came out, they recommended that unless you had a twenty percent tax base of commercial, industrial and personal property, uh, it really wasn't worth it because you wouldn't be cul- you wouldn't be unburdening the residential owner that much and it's ver- you'd very quickly be running up to that fifty, a hundred and fifty percent cap. So what I've done is the first page is at a, a shift of one, which is the current, uh, historical shift in Groton. And then I walk you through in ten percent increments and you can see how much the, um, if you go to the next page and it's a shift at ten percent, well, you've only reduced the residential tax rate by eleven cents, but you've already added a dollar eighty-one to the commercial tax rate. If you go to a twenty percent shift, you've taken twenty-two cents off the residential tax rate and you've added three dollars and sixty-two cents to the commercial tax rate. If you go to a hundred and, um, thirty percent, thirty-four cents off the residential rate and five dollars and forty-three added to the original, um, commercial rate and then for a hundred and forty, you've only taken forty-five cents off the commercial, off the residential rate and you've added seven dollars and twenty-five cents on top of the, uh, original, uh, non, non cap, non-classified rate. And finally, at a hundred and fifty, you would only be saving, uh, fifty-six cents on the original, uh, residential rate but would be adding nine dollars and six cents onto the commercial rate to bring it up to twenty-seven dollars and seventeen cents. So the, the amount of benefit, because of the nature of the tax base here, the amount of benefit that's conferred onto the residential property owners is miser- minimal. But if.
It's miserable.
If you, but if you added a fifty percent, let's say you went to the max, and I'm not suggesting you do that, you would, you would really be putting a large increase on mostly a commercial tax-based demographic that are small businesses. So that's like I, that's what I, that's why I think most communities that have a, a, a majority residential tax base like we do don't do this because of the adverse effect it would have on small businesses.
Does the Board of Assessors take a vote on what they would recommend to advise the Board Selectmen?
Not formally because it's a policy decision.
Policy decision.
I mean, I can, I think if you polled us right now.
I kinda heard you, yeah, I mean.
Recommend against it, but.
Does, does, does the Board wish to hear from our, um, principal assessor or, excuse me, our, uh, both, our employee assessor on his opinion? Or would you like to just go?
Go.
All right, so I think we're ready to go.
I think it would be helpful however to know who the other elected assessors are, Board of Assessors.
Oh, um, Jennifer?
We have, yeah. Don Black.
Don Black.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions about the handouts or how the math works? Before I.
I don't hear any questions, so I think we're ready to go.
Um, uh, does anybody on the board not clear about what the vote will be taking is? It's, do you all understand that we're gonna be selecting a, a, a tax shift basically, which then effectively sets the tax rate for the commercial as well as the personal, personal, uh, the residential, excuse me?
We're voting to set a single rate unless you choose to shift.
Right, you'd be voting, uh, actually, you'd be, when you fill out the LA five, you'd be voting to adopt the residential factor of one.
That's right.
If you chose not to have a classified rate.
Yeah, Allison.
I'm just wondering, does this, in, in terms of the, the estimated total value, does that include, does that incorporate the new assessments or is this still on the old model?
No, it's the new, new values.
It's the new ones, okay.
Yeah, you'll notice that the rate, the unclassified rate went down, that's because the assessments, the, if you look at the bottom of the sheet, I tried to give a little historical perfect perspective. If you look at the bottom, about two-thirds down the page under the rates, you'll see what the total assessed valuation for residential and commercial in total is this year compared to fiscal eighteen. And you'll notice that the, um, the total tax base, uh, went up seven point oh eight percent or a hundred and eighteen million, one hundred and thirteen thousand, fifty dollars. That's an increase in the assessed valuations. We have to review them every year and adjust them for the market. So in, in this case, the, because the assessment, the total aggregate assessed valuation went up at a larger percentage than what you're increasing, proposing to increase the levy, your tax rate, you actually can have a smaller tax rate to collect the amount of money you want.
So individual homeowners or businesses should be looking at how their assessment changed in addition to what the tax rate is.
Right, right, they're going to, that, that, I'm assure you, they will scrutinize that.
Have those, um, new assessments gone out to people or do they go out?
Uh, no, they have to be approved by the Department of Revenue. We hope to have all of, if, if you have your vote tonight, we hope to submit all of the tax rate setting documents, I believe, by the end of next week.
Yeah, okay.
And if that's, if we get the recap approved, uh, you can turn the commitment over to the treasurer.
And then the phone will stop ringing.
Yeah.
That's right.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Allison, do you satisfy?
I am, thank you.
Becky, Josh, John?
I'm okay.
Okay, um, does anybody have a discussion on what we think the tax rate should be?
We know what the tax rate is.
How about what, uh, shift we should do? Should we shift or not shift? Should we set a standard rate or should we?
My only question is how do we word the motion?
You set a residential.
Residential factor of one.
No discussion?
That's the motion.
Take a motion.
I hear the motion.
I'll, I'll hear a motion.
In a draft motion, I will move that we set the residential shift factor, I guess, at, at one point zero, setting the same tax rate for both residential and commercial, industrial and personal property.
Good to me. Any, uh, second on that?
Second?
I'm moving seconded, is there any discussion on that from the members of the Board? Is there any further comment from the assessors in general, giving the opinion? Um, any comment from the public on this item? This is a tax-setting item. The public is silent on this matter. All those in favor, say in the same eye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Heard that unanimous, by the way. Okay, uh, according to my notes, um, we are now back to notify the town managers, the Board's intention to begin annual review. Um, so, uh, I asked for this to be put on here and I know that Mark may have taken responsibility in his notice, but I had a discussion with him, um, a week ago. Uh, given that in two years I've been on the Board, there's been some delays in, uh, fin- finishing that process.
Mr. Chair, I, I move that we close the public hearing on the tax classification.
So moved and seconded, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry to interrupt.
Are we supposed to take the vote after we close the public hearing?
Do we have to take the vote after we close the public hearing?
I move that we reaffirm.
We're gonna redo the vote just in case.
I move that we reaffirm the vote on the tax rate taken prior to the closing of the public hearing.
Second.
Then, uh, the reaffirmation's been moved and seconded, thank you, Josh. All those in favor?
Aye.
Has been reaffirmed as, as a single tax rate for the town.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, no, I appreciate that, I'm trying to move us forward too fast, I apologize. Um, so, uh, because of past years where we've ended up far too long, even the review done and plus we've had some issues with, uh, the Supreme Court changing how the town manager review can be done and we have a new process even in this year, uh, where we're gonna have to go through, uh, an even new process. I asked for this to be put on here to, uh, begin the discussion of the town manager's annual review. So, um, I'll see, open discussion on that. Becky, go ahead, yeah.
Well, yes, we should do this and I, I wondered how this would fit with the next item of, uh, that there being.
I can explain that as well.
A deadline that we have to adhere to on, on notifying the town manager and that deadline being February fifteenth?
Let's, uh, yeah, let's, let's, let's try to handle these in, uh, as individual items.
Well, but, so don't we need to put an end date on, on the annual review that would be, like by February first, is that what we need to do?
Certainly open to have the Board vote on dates, they would like the annual review to be done, if they'd like to adjust it as long as it follows the Charter or the, uh.
Your policy gives me thirty days and you have twenty-one days and then fifteen days.
Yeah, it's basically, it starts at a certain point and then it moves forward from there.
So I know that last year we asked, because all of, all of us, certainly including me, were a little bit slow and we extended mutually that process, but, um, I, I've not been through a, uh, renewing of the contract, so that seems to change things.
Right, so one of the challenges I have with the timing of when we tend to do these reviews, we also get sucked right into budget items and we get very, very busy with budgetary issues and, and other policy-making decisions happen around that time. So I was trying to, hopefully we could separate those two items and spend the time we have now where we have a little bit of time where we're not just doing budget, budget, budget to handle this process and, um, if we don't get it done by December thirty-first, understandable, but at least if it's well underway, we have a chance to get it done in time.
I'm sorry, where did the December thirty-first come into the discussion?
That's when the budget process starts for us, right? The budget gets.
Right, but finishing this review by December?
No, I'm not saying if we don't, if we don't get it done by then, at least we'll have a start on it and there's a chance for it to be completed in a reasonable amount of time.
So, Mark, could you tell us again, what is the, the, what are the timetable things on the?
I have thirty days to get my self-evaluation to the chair. That gets delivered to the Board, the Board then has twenty-one days to finish its evaluation and meet with me, return it to me and then I have fourteen days to get comments back to the Board and then the Board has to vote to approve it. and then the Board has to vote to approve it shortly thereafter.
So, I mean, unless there's something I'm missing, there's no way we're gonna be finished by December thirty-first.
Well, that's, I have thirty days, doesn't mean I have to take thirty days.
Right, but.
We would be done with our part by, by then, if, if thirty days plus fourteen, because we're at the middle of November.
No.
Thirty days plus fourteen is forty, is forty-four days.
We have twenty-one days.
Twenty-one, sorry, six, fifty-one days would be just over the week after the thirty-first. So, we'll be well done as we begin to, to start budget season.
Well, except that if the, so we have the, we have three weeks after we get his, is that? And one of those weeks is Christmas and New Year's.
This is Thanksgiving week. Go ahead, Josh, yes.
You're opening Pandora's box here by proposing this, in my opinion. The town manager currently is in the process of meeting, or will be meeting, with his department heads to get their budgets and formulate what their requests are, and then formulate his budget. Any review that would be written by a competent and open-minded select board member would take into account how the budgeting process works as part of that review, at least in my opinion. Therefore, to commence with a written review prior to seeing what that budget looks like, in my mind, is not prudent. B, when you couple that with a request from the town manager to start discussion or intention if the Board is going to renew his contract or not, at this juncture, before having the review done, again, in my opinion, is not prudent, because the review, in the absence of last year's due to the technical flaws that occurred, will not give us good information to enter into that contract with. And lastly, when you couple that with the request of the Town of Dunstable to extend his tenure as interim town administrator through December thirty-first, I have a statement here, and I think that we have to weigh all three of these things as part of a consideration into the larger picture. So, I would greatly appreciate, Mr. Chairman, if we could take action first on the Town of Dunstable's request to extend the Groton Town Manager's deadline, followed by the request of the Town Manager to discuss the deadline or our intentions on notification on renewing his contract. And then, lastly, what we're currently discussing, because it'll create a better template for us, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I, 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 I can, can appreciate that. Why don't we move on? I will state that I did not expect the Board tonight to discuss renewing, whether or not we were going to renew it. I have had issues before where the Board's gotten surprised when suddenly something appears on the calendar, that, hey, you've got to make a decision on Town Manager's renewal by a certain date, and they are not well advanced. So, I'm hoping tonight's agenda item gives people a sixty-plus day notice that we have an item coming up that we have to go over. And that is the main reason that that is on the, the agenda tonight.
Three, three years ago, the Board voted in mid-November to enter into contract negotiations with. The contract says on before February fifteenth, or whatever that date is. So, the Board, three years ago, voted on November sixteen to extend the contract. So, I'm bringing it up at the same time I did three years ago, asking for the Board's consideration.
Just the contract?
So, let's move on to item number, it's actually not even on the agenda. Let's, let's move on to the other business item of extending the time at, at Dunstable, which we got a notification on today. Mark, do you want to?
Yeah, the.
On number three.
The Dunstable.
On number, sorry.
The Dunstable Board of Selectmen asked if I could stay for thirty more days through December thirty-first. They are interviewing finalists for town administrator tomorrow night. They hope to make a decision shortly thereafter. The new town administrator, hopefully, after background investigation, will stop mid-December. I started the budget process for them. The documents went out this week to the various departments. I met with the advisory committee there last week. So, the budget process is underway, and the advisory committee was hoping to get a budget, preliminary budget for me the first week, you know, last week of December, first week of January. If I could do it, great. If not, I don't want to infringe on my duties here as the Groton Town Manager. But they, I think one of the concerns the Board had before is that this was gonna be open-ended and never-ending, that they wouldn't get a town administrator, but they're very close to hiring one, and they should have one in the next couple of weeks. You know, I, I have no problem if the Board says yes or no. I just thought I'd bring it forward to you. I've worked really well here and there over the last several months, and I'd just like to finish my commitment to Dunstable and get that budget done, but I'm not gonna do anything that impacts my position here in Groton, so.
Josh, do you want to speak on this?
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've got a statement here, because sometimes my thoughts are still escaping here. I forget a few of my things that I was gonna say. But certainly, Mark has done a great job over many years here with managing the Town of Groton, and certainly, the request of Dunstable to act as an interim town administrator was met by our Board with open arms initially, back in, I think it was June, Mark?
August, August.
Was it August?
August, John?
July.
It was August.
It was August, according to John.
Okay, it was hot. It was hot. So, but anyway, be that as it may, so, we felt that it was a slow time here, and that, in order to be a good neighbor, helping Dunstable on a time of need, that, based on our commitment, that we said that you could do that, and we voted in favor of it. And then you came back to us and said specifically and explicitly that you wanted an extension through November thirtieth, and that's all you would need. And that met with some resistance by this Board. However, we granted that to you. Now, it's not you who's necessarily requesting this.
I actually asked for, through December thirty-first, you cut it back to November thirtieth.
Be that as it may, your primary and number-one job is to be the Town Manager in the Town of Groton.
No question.
We are entering into budget season right now, and while I love Dunstable, and I think it's great, this is Groton, and our job as a Board is to make sure that Groton is run well. And you have gone through an extensive search to find a town administrator that will fill the full-time role in the Town of Dunstable, and my understanding is they'll be voting tomorrow night to hire someone. And while I understand that you may want to help that individual transition when they start into the budget and explain certain things, it's more important to me that you spend the time that's required during budget season to make sure that things are tight, things are right, and while it may seem like second nature to you, last year, we had huge surprises in the budget that you proposed to us once we received it, that were rather shocking to some of the members of this Board. I don't feel like being shocked this year, and I'm sure that the taxpayers and the other Board members don't want any shock factors either, and I don't think there will be any. But we need you to give a hundred percent to the Town of Groton right now. And while you could finish through the end of November, in my opinion, in Dunstable, extending that any further, in my mind, other than maybe picking up the phone to answer some questions from a Selectman in Dunstable or a Finance Advisory Committee, I have no problem with you doing that with a, with a new town administrator, but I'm not comfortable extending the contract. It's as simple as that.
John, Allison, Becky?
I do have thoughts, but I don't have the minutes.
John, as the spearhead, or I shouldn't raise, as our liaison to Dunstable and in all of this conversation, I'm interested in hearing your opinion on this matter.
Somehow, we need to bring this to, to a stop, and. I, I share with Josh his concern, because we do have our budget to get together, and, and there's plenty of work to do there. Mark has been using his vacation time and, and personal days and so forth when he wasn't here at work and was working up there. But I think we all get burned out after we, we're running essentially two, two jobs at, at one time. And as we get down into the last two weeks of December, we're, we're into a period where not an awful lot gets done. So, I think I'd be more comfortable if we did a fifteen-day extension, and then that was it. No, no renewal, not gonna do it again.
Okay. Becky, or Allison, whoever would like to approach?
So, I, as I'm sure you all remember, voted against this from the outset. This was presented and agreed to, as Josh mentioned, in the spirit of being a good neighbor and helping out the town that is our, our co-school district partner. But I think it was also presented as a much shorter and less amount of time than it actually has turned out to be. And I feel a little bit stuck at this point, because I was opposed to it. There's some logic to continuing through, as, as Mark has proposed, but I, I really, I have not thought it was a good idea right from the outset. And there's no denying Mark works very hard and accomplishes a lot. I, I really want to emphasize that. But I think this has taken a lot more time than was originally proposed. I believe that the original decision, if, that was made in, I guess, August, was for three months, and that's why we said, when you came back to ask for more, that it had to end on November thirtieth, because our original motion had been for three months. I actually think, John, that what you just suggested, the first two weeks of December are the only two productive weeks of December in, in a lot, for a lot of people. So, you know, I think there were, we're not getting the value that we need if we approve that. I, I'm still opposed to this. I think that the Charter, which, the only reason we even had to vote on this was because it says in the Charter that the Town Manager's position is a full-time job, and he cannot have other jobs without our permission. I think the Charter was right on that.
So, at this point, I, I agree with most, if not all, of what I'm hearing. I'm, I could support a fifteen-day extension. I think going through the end of December is just kind of putting too many important and large deadlines at the same time. That's not the best plan.
Mark, may I ask a question?
Of course.
What does fifteen versus thirty versus zero do? Give me a, I mean, there've been two, there's two polls on the table right now, zero and a thirty, uh, excuse me, a zero and a fifteen, the way I heard it.
Zero, I, I finished November thirtieth, and I'm done. They hire a new town administrator, and I feel like I accomplished what I wanted to accomplish over there. Giving me fifteen extra days will allow me to at least put a preliminary budget quickly together for them, so they have an idea of what the, what their numbers are for next year. And I can probably, you know, depending on the background check, have a day or two with the new town administrator, welcoming him on board. That, that's about it. Hope that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you. Any, any more discussion on this? There's, there's two situations here, and. Yeah, Allison?
I'm just wondering, my recollection was when we voted to extend it, that we moved it from December thirty-first to November thirty-first, because that was as far as we were allowed to extend it.
This is far from what I wanted to extend.
No, it said in the original.
Yeah, the original agreement, right.
Said one thirty-day extension, you're right, I'm sorry.
So, I'm wondering, do we even have the ability to do this?
That's a good point. The original agreement stated one thirty-day extension, is that not right? What's your recollection, John?
It's not a law, it was a.
Well, I know, but it's, it's agreement.
But there was something in the original vote, which was why we, and when we were asked to extend it, we set November thirtieth, and, and it was stated that that was gonna be fine.
Go ahead, Josh.
The original agreement was for Mark to help them analyze what was going on within the town structure of the Town of Dunstable, followed by the extension to help them work with the finding of a new town administrator. And had nothing to do with the formulation of a budget for the Town of Dunstable. And now, all of a sudden, here you are doing a budget for a town. In addition to, in addition to, and I understand why they want you to do it, because they're thrilled with your knowledge base and what you're doing, Mark. So, it's a compliment that they're asking you to do this, and, and I think that's great. But in my opinion, it potentially is putting the Town of Groton in a detrimental situation, because you're focusing on two different communities with two different needs, and not that your sharp mind would get confused, but no one's perfect.
I'm confused now.
And I've been confused for the last couple of months, but I'm not confused about this.
I'm, I'm fine with whatever this Board decides. My job as Town Manager of the Town of Groton is to June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, and I want to continue serving the town well, so.
So, I'm, I'm.
I'll leave it up to you to decide what you want to do.
I'm actually quite thankful of this debate, because it brings back some of the ideas and considerations, and it, it, it brings to my attention that I, I, I don't blame the Town of Dunstable for asking to have Mark help create a budget and transition somebody in, and where I'm in their shoes, I certainly would do so. However, I, I have to agree that I think it's beyond the scope of what we originally, what they originally requested, and I don't know if you might agree with that, John, since you did a lot of the discussions. I do recall what was slipped and said here twice, that the, you know, to, to kind of evaluate where they were, set some structures in place, and help them find a new town manager, we didn't talk about helping them establish a twenty FY, FY twenty budget.
Well, on the other hand, we didn't say it couldn't be.
Right, that's true.
Okay.
I just worry about skill creep, right? I mean, we'll always get skill creeped if we keep finding, keep finding new things with a talented individual that they want to use that as skills for.
But I'd like to see us give Mark until Friday, the twentieth of December, and then that's it. It's done. It's been a little transition time with this new person coming on board, which I think is important, because otherwise, he'll get tons more calls later on, and, and then wind it up.
So, the.
And that's it. If they don't get a, a new person, Mark, you know, nobody meets requirements, that's their, that's gotta be their problem to deal with. We can't, we can't solve everything there.
That would require, then, that we send a letter to issuing state, and it'd be a last and final, if it were to go that way. I'm not saying it does, but I want, I want it documented and written and signed.
Just do an addendum, a written addendum to the original approval, which I'll take care of.
Yeah, I want it in writing, though.
And get it, we'll get it signed by Mark, and we'll get it agreed to by Dunstable.
You changed from fifteen days to twenty.
Think you looked at a calendar?
I just looked at a calendar, so, it's, that's three weeks. Otherwise, you want to go back to the thirteenth, because the fifteenth is a Sunday. If you want to go back to the thirteenth, that's okay, but.
The fourteenth.
Close it up before the, the holiday break here, and.
I think you're looking at quite the wrong, the Fridays are the seventh, the fourteenth, and the twenty-first.
Oh, yeah, you got two thousand nineteen, John, got eighteen. Becky's right.
Oh, that would be good.
Okay, so we're looking at the wrong calendar.
Only one year off. What's a year?
If I'm still here in December two thousand nineteen.
That's a good.
We've got a lot of issues.
All right, let's see what this looks like. All right, let's see what this looks like. Same colors.
So the fourteenth is the end of the week.
Fourteenth is the end.
Okay. So you want to go with the fourteenth, I'm, I'm fine with that.
So there's two proposals on the table, the way I hear them, a zero, I, there are a lot of stuff that are November thirtieth or thirty first.
Thirty.
I thought there were thirty days in November, right?
It's only thirty in November.
Okay, all right. So November thirtieth or December fourteenth, which is a two week span at worst, ten working day span.
We've already granted an extension through November third.
Yeah.
That's correct. In other words, we end, and the two polls on the table is keep, start, no longer, no past November thirty, we keep our, retain, we don't approve any extensions, or December fourteenth. Those are the two things I've heard from the board.
But it gets accomplished in one vote, one motion.
Yeah, whatever, I just, yeah.
No, we haven't made any motions.
Nobody's made any motions yet. I'm just making sure everybody's clear on what's happening. Any other thing further from board? There's been a hand raised, although we don't really have a motion, Marlena, but why don't we wait till I get a motion before we ask this public comment? Thank you. All right, nothing further from board. So at this point, I'd like to have somebody make a motion so that we can make something, some decision here.
I'll make a motion.
All right, John Geiger.
Because you turn this one down, then we know the answer to the other one.
Right, thank you.
I move that we extend Mark Haddad's permission to work or to do, provide services, professional services to the town of Dunstable while serving in his current position through an ending on December fourteenth.
May I request a friendly amendment?
Sure.
With no further extensions possible or allowable.
Accepted.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Further discussion from the board? Ms. Merle, from the public, Marlena, yes.
I just wanted to add some feedback from taxpayers and vendors as well as school committee. The budget process is very difficult dealing with more than one member town in a regional district and itself. We're a primary town in our school, meaning seventy-seven percent of kids are Groton children. The budget process does affect primarily both towns, but certainly Groton significantly. And the budget process this year, in such a short period of time, with Mark being involved both in Groton and Dunstable, has been valuable to our district, in my opinion. And the reason why I say that is, it's very difficult to work with various partners with various different methodologies in regards to how they work with budgets or how they don't work with budgets. And this particular year, actually getting information would have been easier, working would have been a lot easier and a lot more productive. So I think that, that was one of my last points, I don't want to be much commentary, is I would imagine that the town manager who wants to work in Groton would never set himself up to depart that position because he feels that is job by helping out another small town. I think that just past year, his work experience here shows he should know what he can handle and what he can't. And if he's saying he knew it, I think that that may be something to be considered.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Yeah. Go ahead, Robertson, thank you.
I would second what Marlena said, and also, as you think about going into the budget season, Mark is putting the budget together. You think about, I agree that this is sort of dead time at the second half of December, but dead time is when, I'm sure that's when all the work is done, when you're putting a budget together. So if you're gonna have a two week period where you sell in Dunstable, the two week that can help and will also help the schools, the first two weeks after that is when you put this whole budget together and get it done by January. So I don't believe, like Marlena said, he can do it, but I don't think this, I think the best plan to do is do the two weeks like John proposed and then let it dead time, when it happens. It won't be dead, it'll be pushing that whole budget together. And so I, if he says it's okay, I, as a Fintender, I think he can do it. And I agree with Marlena, I think the schools and the budget coming together are a very complex, difficult time, especially this year with the numbers all kind of. I think having that input is very good in our cycle, never mind obviously the Dunstable, but I think it's gonna impact the school and our cycle, so I think it's good to have and finish it up and hand it off properly to the Dunstable crowd.
Thank you for that feedback. Any further comments from the board? I see Becky has a comment.
I'll just point out that whether or not we allow this, and nothing prevents Mark from talking with his counterpart who gets hired in Dunstable, and I would assume there should be a lot of conversation about the budget in any given year, so.
That's a very good point.
It's not like we're preventing that by saying if, if we should vote against.
That's a very good point.
All right, is there anything, any more discussion this matter? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion as proposed by Mr. Geiger, signatures saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No. So it passes three to two.
Do we need, do we need five signatures on this?
We need three signatures on this, I assume, but we can keep the signature signing if we'd like to. My carpal tunnel will kill us, but that's okay. All right, now let's discuss the notification that the board has until February fifteenth to notify the town manager of contractor renewal. Item number three. Is anybody clear, is there anybody question on that? Yeah.
Yeah, I had a question. Well, because, Mark, so it's in the contract, I'm sorry, I didn't read the contract.
That's okay.
I could have answered my own question, but the timeline is in the contract that says we would have to notify you by February fifteenth if we were not gonna renew your contract.
Correct.
Does.
Doesn't mean you negotiate, it just tells me you're going to renew the contract.
Yeah. Does the contract have any language about annual reviews?
No.
No.
So when you said three years ago that that board voted in November that they were gonna renew your contract following June.
Yep.
They did that having not done an annual review or?
I think they had eight years of, seven years of experience, it's of whether or not, I mean, if we're gonna, if it's gonna come down to an annual review as to whether or not you're gonna renew the contract, I'm not doing my job, I don't think. I mean, it should be based on my body of work over the last ten years, I think.
I think we actually, one year renegotiated your contract for an additional three years prior to the contract reaching its conclusion.
You ripped it up and.
Remember, we gave you a new contract.
Correct.
So there's nothing prohibiting us from doing this, and in all fairness, I've scanned my brain, I think you did bring this up three years ago with this timeline.
I did.
Yeah?
Dawn reminded me of that. I like to be consistent.
Well.
Any other questions? Becky, if you're any.
And as one of the newer people on this board who doesn't have ten years of experience other than as a citizen observing, I don't know, it seems like we should do the review first, but it looks like the timelines don't work very well.
So you, so just to be clear, you have had, you did do a review for the last year, even though I recognize you were only here for six months of that, or seven months of that, I appreciate that. And you have the breadth of experience this year. I certainly, you know, some people do need a process where they put that on paper and got through it to make that decision. I hundred percent validate that, some people may not. This is for the board to discuss, the notification, we have to do this, if the board does not wish to proceed on this tonight and wishes me to bring this up at a future time, I will try to regularly bring this up to see if the board is ready to consider this item. Because in my opinion, it is an important item and we do need to make it similar to the other, and forgive me, Mark, for speaking in a non-personal way, but if we decide we do not want to retain this town manager, I would prefer to get that search on as soon as possible so that we can have maybe the pick of other town managers out there. So I just think there's a lot of benefit in making that decision prior to February fifteenth when other towns may be doing the same, then you have, you're competing against other towns for the, during the crop.
Also gives me a longer opportunity to finally have the job.
Right, there's also some courtesy and consideration for the current town manager contract.
I'd be interested to hear what John has to say as the newest member of the board.
John, do you wish to have something to say? He's already, he's already, he's already twenty nineteen, he's good.
If we, if we can do it earlier, I think there's advantage in it for both parties. But in my mind, it's a time and a process issue, we need to do the performance review before we do that, we need to accelerate that, so, you know, sort of bouncing the question down the road to me only seems to put it into a much bigger knot than in the very near future deciding if we're gonna move it up, what we're gonna move it up to, and then back plan from there to get this performance business done. If we make that a prerequisite to having the second discussion.
Right. Allison, if you'd like to weigh in here?
I, I'd, I'd, I would rather make a motion.
All right, please make a motion.
I would like to make a motion that the select board requests to open negotiations with the town manager regarding extension of the contract.
I think that. Yeah, I don't know, what are we supposed to do? I understand what you're trying to say, and basically you're saying you're making a motion that we notify him, that we'd like to renew.
Mm-hmm.
Is that what I'm getting, I don't know how we've.
To, to get that, to put that date clear.
Or you want to specify a date?
Is that, is that the name, is that the purpose?
Move it back to.
I'm not.
Josh, you've done this before.
I mean, I.
Yeah, look, just 'cause you, as a board, would vote in favor of rene, opening, renegotiate, opening negotiations, doesn't necessarily mean that you will achieve a successful negotiation. I mean, salary considerations, all various things. I would have no problem supporting Allison's motion. However, I would not want to stock those negotiations until after I see his budget. So I would not want to begin that until, say, January fourth or fifth, somewhere around there. I just would like that amount of time. I don't know if that's fair, but I have no problem supporting the motion to renegotiate this contract.
So what else, February fifteenth, right? The contract that says.
That's a draw.
That's what's stipulated, yeah.
So what if we move back to January fifteenth or whatever workday is close to that?
Why, why would we?
Just move it back a month.
Why would we do that?
Because we don't want, say, we don't have successful contract conclusion, negotiations on a one, two, or three year contract. We need to leave ourselves some time to get another town manager. Mark needs to find himself a position that he can be successful at. So the more time you give and keep position like this, the better it is for the town.
Transition would, will be much smoother, I mean, if there is to be a transition.
And I'm not suggesting that, nor are you, but.
Right, but it, it's.
I'm getting a little nervous.
Well, no, but we're talking about why do it and, and, you know, that.
Who has a calendar?
Advantages to both parties.
Don't look at John's calendar, he's.
Who has a calendar of January two thousand nineteen in front of him?
I do.
What's the first Monday?
January seventh.
January seventh.
First non, oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, but we're still crawling out of our holiday sleep here.
I understand, but you crawl out, contract negotiations are done on executive session. Schedule an executive session for January seventh and let's have a preliminary discussion on this.
January seventh, two thousand and nineteen is a Monday.
But you're sorry, you didn't notify that we intend to.
That's what he asked, he asked the first Monday in January.
Okay, you got it.
So that gets back to that.
I'm sorry.
So for the purposes of discussion, by the way, I'll second Allison's motion, excuse me.
And what was your motion? I, I wasn't sure.
To indicate our intention to enter into contract negotiations with the town manager.
You don't have to start until after the budget.
And leaving that, and moving that up earlier than February fifteenth.
February fifteenth is when we have, we are required to give notice to the town manager on whether or not we're going to enter into negotiations for a new contract.
Well, actually, it's a contractual automatic renewal is what February fifteenth, we fail to give.
It's a one-year renewal.
Yes, we fail to give notification by then. It's not a, it's not a you have to do it on that date, it's a, if you don't do it by that date, you're automatically gonna have that town manager for another year.
I get it.
Yeah.
Right.
So it's not a.
So I am unclear what the point is of Allison's motion.
To.
To me, it would signify.
To get a board's, sorry.
To me, to me, it would, it would signify that we want to have that discussion around contract extension and that we're interested in pursuing, continuing that employment contract in some flavor. To me, you know, the, the review and the, the contract are easily separated in my mind, so I'm not having kind of deep issues.
So, so my initial issue was that I thought we should do the review first before we made that decision about another year's contract. But you said that you, you could separate those, and in fact, you, then why do we need to move it up sooner?
The board would have to agree on whether or not the completion of the performance evaluation is a prerequisite for us considering renewal of the contract.
Right.
So if we're still having difficulty in getting the review done and the fifteenth comes, if we make it a prerequisite, and the fifteenth comes and we don't have that completed, guess what? We don't even have to have a.
Then we're a couple, right.
You don't trouble you, however.
Well, just following, just following your, your policy, if I, if I may, your policy says the first meeting in January, you tell the town manager to start his review. So on January seventh, you tell me to stop my review. I have until February seventh to give you my review, and then you have twenty-one days after that to get it back to me.
Right, right, so.
You're not gonna make it February fifteenth.
They're both, they're in conflict.
That's why, you want to start the review now? Or do, so that's why we brought it up tonight?
Well, if it's a prerequisite.
If it's a prerequisite.
Right, but now we're heading down a road of doing neither of those things, of saying we're gonna negotiate the contract earlier than February fifteenth and we're still gonna do the review afterwards.
No, we're not.
We're gonna notify the town manager that we intend to negotiate a contract.
We're not negotiating the contract at that time.
We're not necessarily negotiating.
We're making the decision whether we even want to sit down and have that conversation.
Well, is that true? Is that what you're gonna say?
That's correct.
John's, John's absolutely one hundred percent correct.
So we're not negotiating.
No, you're notifying me that you intend to, which gives me the same comfort that you want in here for three more years.
So you're suggesting we take that vote on January seventh?
No, she's suggesting we take that vote now.
Just take that vote right now.
Indicating our intent to begin contract negotiations on or around January seventh.
John, I was.
So we are negotiating.
Contract negotiation.
We are setting a firm date that in January, we will start negotiating.
Okay.
Contract negotiations, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
And it might behoove us as a corollary to go back to have our reviews done by then so that there's some precipice for, and some, some reality regarding those.
I'm fine with starting this review now.
I know you are.
In between Dunstable here, budgets, everything else, plenty of.
Surgeries.
Yeah.
Surgeries.
Josh.
As long as the timeline for our return of our individual reviews gives us enough latitude to extend beyond the point where we received Mark's budget for the next fiscal year, I'm fine with that, as I had said earlier. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, at least from my perspective, I know what I believe Mark's strengths are in, in the areas he may need improvement. And I would think that in each individual board member's minds, you all know that already even though it hasn't been codified on a piece of paper, not to mention that the entire personnel file, which includes Mark's previous reviews, while they're not available to the public except for where they were disclosed, are available to any member of this board. So you can go back and you can look at those reviews since the date of his hire, is that fair? So there's a, there's a wealth of information.
So the way I calculated, the way I've calculated the numbers, if we, if we start the, if we ask Mark to start the review process, and we can ask for latitude from Mark, it's a policy, it's not a, it's not, it's not in the, it's not in the charter, it's not in, it's not in his contract. If you would, if, it seems to me like we need to be able to, not be able to return his review to him until perhaps January fifteenth, right? So we've had some time to encapsulate, have some discussions, and then coordinate pieces. So. So, okay, so, so with that on the table, we, we may have to move on that next, 'cause we wanna settle one item at a time. That, that may be the intent, and it may be in agreement with us that we intend to want to submit to Mark our reviews, for him then to respond to, and for the chair then to collect, and do all that fancy business.
Could I...
We, yes.
Say something? I, I am, I believe we should stick with the beginning of review on January first. I, I realize that it's not possible to do the review before we settle this question of renewing the contract. I'm not interested in adding the review into the next two months' worth of intensity anymore than, I think, I think we should stick with the January first for beginning the review. I think the separate, the second issue to be decided is, at some point between now and February fifteenth, we need to make, take a vote to formally tell him that we're going to...
Sorry, the motion, sorry.
There's a motion on the floor.
We are gonna take that, we're gonna take it.
And, and you're, okay, could you, I, I've been confused about your motion all along, could you again restate, or what does the motion state?
Ms. Minoguean wants to request that they open negotiations with the town manager for an extension of the contract.
And could you just tell me what you mean by that? What, we open negotiations means we are gonna meet in an executive session and discuss?
Yes.
Yeah.
What it, I think what it says to Mark is, the board is willing to consider continuing your employment. That we haven't already reached a decision that says we don't wanna renew.
Right, so we're, in effect, doing the thing that has to be done by February fifteenth, but your motion is saying that we were, we will have that meeting on Sep- on January seventh?
She's not, her motion doesn't say anything like that. You heard her motion.
I, I'm sorry, I, I have been unclear about this motion repeatedly, and I've said so, I'm trying to get it clarified.
So, the motion currently does not have a date in it?
I suggest that...
I'm fine if, if you're more comfortable adding that date of early January to begin those negotiations?
No, I, I just thought that that was what was said. So, it's just, basically, we're taking the vote that says we're gonna renew the contract?
Correct.
Pending successful contract...
We're gonna remove the contract, we're gonna vote...
Yes.
And in, and in your mind, do, are we gonna have had those successful negotiations prior to February fifteenth?
It doesn't...
You don't have to.
No.
Doesn't matter, really, it's starting now, but...
The negotiations, just so you know from past history, typically have taken anywhere from one year or a few meetings, and one year, if I recall, it took three months.
Twenty-three meetings, last contract.
I, I remember all too well.
One meeting, the contract before that.
I remember that.
Alright, so, if I might, if I may, state my understanding, make sure I'm clear. If we take this vote tonight in favor, it says, we have already met the provisions for the February fifteenth deadline.
Correct.
And then if we stick with our January first, beginning the review as usual, is that, I know it's a separate thing, but...
We can discuss that next. Well, that's, that's fine, we'll discuss that next. I'm interested to discuss that next. Plan to.
Thank you for your patience.
So, do we have a second? There's, there's a, yes, I seconded it.
You did.
For the purpose of discussion, 'cause we were already discussing it.
Okay.
I felt that was appropriate.
Alright, then call the question.
Alright, uh, are there any dis- any contributions from members of the public writing this item? I have to ask. People can matter if I don't ask. Alright, uh, all those in favor of the motion, simply saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Heard that unanimous.
Thank you very much. I feel better.
I wouldn't.
Barry, I'm gonna be excusing myself, um, so I...
Do you have an opinion on this item regarding the review?
Keep it where it is.
Okay, thank you.
Not, because I'm sure that the town manager feels completely relieved that we've taken that vote concerning the contract.
Will you stay for two minutes? I know, I know you're tired and everything, but I really, as a member of the housing trust, having you for the next discussion, I think is kind of important. If you can't stay, I understand.
When I start fading...
Okay, understood.
We can table it to the next meeting.
Can you drive?
No, no, can I drive? Yeah, if you let me get out of here in the next fifteen minutes.
So, can I bring that, can I bring that up, Mr. Chairman, if, if Josh needs...
No, I'm fine, look, can we just deal with the, the performance review? I think it's pretty cut and dry. Why can't we just stick with the current formula?
Yeah, quickly. I think we just need to be cognizant that in past years, last year in particular, it took until May.
My suggestion is, is the town manager doesn't grant an extension.
Before or after the contract?
And apparently, we can't renegotiate a contract unless we have the review, so, I, I expect...
We passed on that.
No, we've, we've told them we're going to, but, but people may feel uncomfortable negotiating that contract without having that review done.
We're good.
So, um...
I'm fine, January's fine. January seventh, I'll put it on the table. Is that alright?
I'm gonna hit my wall. I'm sorry, I'm, I think I've got the flu, 'cause I'm getting chills right now.
Josh is...
Everybody, everybody move.
I got my shot, though, two weeks ago.
I'm moving into two thousand and nineteen now.
I know. Alright, um...
Can I skip ahead to item number five, with Josh's chair?
Yes, please do, yes, please do.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, I had been, I, I alerted the board previously that, um, when, when Art Pressett comes to me with an idea about investigating the possibility of creating a senior housing development on Towne and Lanceron on the country club, uh, golf course. The towns of Acton and Tinsborough successfully created such housing, and I thought this had a lot of potential, and I appreciate Art bringing it to the board. So, I had mentioned this to the board previously, and, and the board didn't, um, didn't really give me any negative feedback, so I figured to continue to pursue it. So, in order to do that, I, I approached the housing trust and asked them, uh, for funding to hire an engineer, an engineer to develop a conceptual plan to determine if it is feasible at all. Um, I got a, I also, just to preserve my rights with the community preservation committee, just in case I needed more money for, for engineering, because this is an affordable housing application, I needed to get the two-page application to the, to this community preservation committee by...
Twenty-six.
Yeah, so I, I needed to meet that. So, I just did that as a placeholder to preserve the, the application. So, the housing trust met last week, and apparently, some, Don Black came in and attended their, their meeting and presented them with a similar proposal uh, to create eighty units on twenty acres. I'm not sure if it was affordable or not. I, I don't understand his, his exact proposal. But the trust wanted to get more information and decided to hold off. So, I'm coming to you tonight asking you for permission to do one of two things. Either approach the finance committee for reserve fund transfer of forty-five hundred dollars, or allow me to spend it out of available funds for town meeting, and then reimburse that account in, in, in May, so that I can at least get a conceptual plan done, because without a conceptual plan, I don't know if this will work. And I think it's, it's something worthy of, of an investigation to see if we can, if we can do something here. So, I'm here tonight asking you for permission to spend money, one way or the other, on this. The board doesn't want me to pursue it, I'll stop now. If the board wants me to pursue it, I, I would really, really appreciate pursuing it.
Notice the add that if you like the...
You need to mic it up.
Frank Stanley, housing coordinator, just on the add, if you free up forty-five hundred dollars to do the concept plan, then that could, you know, immediately make clear that you don't need to spend more money to look at further. There's some fatal flaw, but it could be a cheap way to get started in, you know, exploring the idea and the thought that there's more money to be spent than there's for pending CPC application to do further engineering that will be lighter.
Comments, questions, thoughts? Yeah, I guess we'll continue through the audience. I have Art.
Um, yeah, a little background here. So, I was a developer, remember?
Thank you.
The country club was bought from my, it's been eighty-nine, four, twenty-nine million dollars. It was a lot of money, took a long, long time, you know, it was dead back in two thousand and ten, but I know that Peter and Josh were all were to shut down the country club, and, and, and... Mark did a credible job in beginning to bring it close to break even, although I think this year it was supposed to be break even, I think it's gonna lose sixty grand, somewhere around there. In addition, amortization of capital is not included in those numbers, and we got about, if I remember correctly, about twenty-eight thousand dollars.
No, that is included.
Not in the expense line.
No, but it's included in the overall...
Yeah. Um, so, I was talking about possibilities with Marlena, uh, who was, who's here tonight. And we started talking about the possibility of having an over fifty-five, um, active retirement community there. And as luck would have it, I happened to mention this to Peter Mayette, and found out that in nineteen eighty-nine, he was trying to buy the country club with a silent partner to build condos there. Um, at the time, um, the, uh, chairman of the, um, selectmen said, "No way. I'm not gonna let you do it, we're gonna buy the country club." Um, that was Barbara Ghadelli. And so, the town bought the country club for one point nine million dollars at the time. I, what, all of a sudden, I found out from Peter that they had a plan to build somewhere close to forty condos there. But there were not gonna be fifty-five plus condos, they're gonna be regular condos. So, that, that plan went nowhere, but he did do, uh, from what I understand, he did do some, uh, perk testing on parts of the land to make sure it would perk. Now, the ideal situation is there in water and sewer there, but the land does perk. So, the concept plan is critical to taking the next, next step forward. If you look at some of the units that are similar to this, like Quail Ridge over in Acton, there's a lot of units there that were built. Um, it was built by Pulte, and it was actually built by a builder and then taken over by Pulte. And they have a pool, and they have, they have a lot of units, because they had a lot more land. And that's turned, turned out to be very, very beneficial to the town of Acton. My estimate right now, is if you take into account the possible taxes on, um, let's say forty units, and include the cost that we always bear every year for mowers, or, whatever, uh, golf carts, we're talking three to four hundred thousand dollars a year in incremental tax benefit to the town. Um, that's with forty units. And if you, depending upon how much they sell for, um, it could be a, a major, major improvement to the finance committee. We're struggling to find forty million, or forty thousand, or twenty thousand dollars oftentimes. In addition, if we decide to sell it and flip it with very tight constraints, so that I don't have a bunch of golfers coming out with the golf clubs, um, that the, the golf club will remain open, the existing members can be members, they'll still have green fees, and hopefully, we might have a new clubhouse. Um, I think it's also important for the economic development of Groton, because if you go back and look, and I mentioned this a week or so ago, at the Economic Development Committee charter that exists right now, which says positioning Groton as the destination community for arts, music, and recreation, a golf course in Groton is a great place to draw traffic for the Groton Inn. Um, because they, they're part of their business plan is, in fact, to have recreation in, as, as an aspect of drawing customers into the Groton Inn. So, I hope your folks will support it and, and help us work through this whole thing, so, that's my story. Yeah, just a, just a real, a quick point, do we know, um, or has it been looked into, whether or not there's any restriction on this land?
There's, uh...
There isn't?
There isn't.
Okay, 'cause I thought when the town acquired it, in fact, there was a restriction placed on this land.
Not that I'm aware of, I'll double check.
Okay, thank you.
Becky, yeah? Um, yeah, the first thing I wanna say is I'm in favor of exploring this concept, and I'm in favor of authorizing, uh, the use of funds, and I'm neutral about which of those two ways that Mark suggested we would do the funding. Uh, but I do wanna say two things. One is, it's important to me that we, the select board, we are the elected governing board of this town. If this project is going to for- go forward, this is a "we" project, not an "I" project. Mark, I'm talking to you. Your language, okay? If, if this project is gonna go forward, we talk about it as "we," the select board.
I always talk about things as "we." I just said what I have done so far.
Well, except in this one, you didn't. It, and it jumped out to me, that's why I'm commenting, early on, this has gotta be something...
Everything I do is for the town of Groton, Becky. Everything I do is for the town of Groton.
I understand that, Mark, and you understand what I'm talking about, 'cause we've talked about it before. I just wanna make sure that if we're not all in favor, we don't go forward with it, but I, I am in favor of this, I said that at the outset. But I do think it should be, uh, something that we, as the elected board, are very much in favor of. Um, and the other part that I wanna say is, I am, at this point, do not want this to be always presented as a way to support the country club. Um, there's definitely, you know, revenue possibilities here, but I don't want to say automatically, this is revenue that supports the country club. This is something for the town to, to proceed exploring with, and we make decisions later about how we allocate income, if there is such a thing.
I'm gonna give Josh the courtesy, considering his, uh, imminent departure.
Thank you. Um, so, I did not attend the Affordable Housing Trust meeting, uh, last Tuesday night, I believe it was, uh, where, uh, the request was brought forward, uh, by the town manager for the funds to come from available funds that the Affordable Housing Trust has for funding this project. Because an alternative project was potentially proposed by Don Black, of which I know nothing of. That said, the Affordable Housing Trust has a goal to create and achieve, um, the ten percent mandate that the Department of Housing and Community Development, uh, states that every community should have. But I see a way bigger picture than that. Um, we need to create a diversity of housing within the community, uh, of Groton, not just McMansions and, uh, things that are on two-acre lots, uh, unless you happen to be over the lake on smaller lots, or in Groton Center, or over in West Groton. I think we need to create, uh, as I said, a diversity of housing. And if a component of that diversity had an affordable quotient to it, uh, as well as an over fifty-five component to it, I think that that's the exact diversity that people need, that may wanna downsize from their four or five-bedroom home and move to a country club-type location in an over fifty-five community. At the same time, it can help much-needed infrastructure within the country club by maybe putting a dome over the swimming pool, building a new clubhouse, doing things that are not only gonna enhance the needs of, um, the community that would be built there, but also help the membership and the needs of the community of the town of Groton. So, for all of those reasons, it's not about the big A, uh, DHCD uses for affordable housing. It's what's affordable within the town. So, with that said, it doesn't negate Don Black coming forward with his proposal. But for forty-five hundred dollars, uh, certainly, it would prove us to move forward and have Mark get that engineering study so we can see what is really required, or the conceptual study, excuse me, uh, to see what's required. And, um, simultaneously, we can, as the Affordable Housing Trust, hear what Mr. Black is proposing, and, um, then make some decisions based on that. So, I wholeheartedly support it, and I would like to see you go get a reserve fund transfer for it.
John? Um, my feeling is, if we're gonna start spending money, uh, I would like to see us put in place five-member feasibility and desirable, desirability planning committee, um, to work along with Mark in this evaluation. Um, so that we start getting public involvement, um, right, right from the get-go here. It doesn't, it doesn't slow anything down particularly, it doesn't add any extra weight, um, but when, when a recommendation comes back, it, it will have the benefit of, uh, a number of sets of eyes and minds, you know, having wrestled with the data and so forth. So, I just think it'll move smoother that way, uh...
I think that's a good idea.
Excellent idea.
Allison?
Um, so, I, I like the idea that John has just brought up. I, I have no big concern with this concept moving forward. I guess my concern is, is process-related, in that I'm not entirely comfortable that we're, in moving this forward, to me, we're eliminating other concepts that perhaps merit a look. Um, whether it's the idea of, of putting some commercial, not taking over the whole parcel, but doing some commercial in there. Um, you know, to me, there's still a question around, we're, we're giving the country club a few years to see what the finances and benefits look like. I, I don't wanna move forward with something that contains embedded in it a guarantee that we're going to hold on to the country club as such. So, I'd like to see this kind of at least balanced with some other concept reviews or discussions, perhaps similar to what went on in other reports about the country club in... concept reviews or discussions, perhaps similar to what went on in other reports about the country club in past years. I don't wanna see us do a concept, come through the design, get quotes, get bids, and then have someone say, "Well, what about the idea of a medical office building or something?"
So what's your proposal, if I may ask?
My proposal would be to take another look at the two reports that Mark had forwarded to me around the country club and to revisit what all of the alternatives were for the parcel, before we decide that we wanna move forward only looking at adding housing.
So are you, are you against getting the validation that we can or can't do the housing?
I, I would support that as long as, as other people kind of support the idea that we need to consider some other perspectives or considerations. You know, and at, at least have some conversations about that.
Would you like to imbue that into the charge that John just created for this committee? Or that, excuse me, he didn't create anything, that John's idea with that, I mean, with that, I mean, I'm trying to find a reasonable, like, I wanna move forward, but I wanna encompass these ideas, right?
I think that, that makes sense to, to, to create that committee, whether it's an appointed committee or kind of an ad hoc working committee with the town manager, to start with those two previous reports, review them, see what, you know, at a high level, what things have changed and what other things might make sense to consider at this point. And certainly, I have no problem with moving this forward as one of the alternatives, but this-
Uh, but we're about to lose Josh. Josh, do you wanna take a vote?
No, you heard where I am, and I think that Allison's, uh, proposal has a lot of merit, and I think that John's proposal, uh, to have that committee has a lot of merit. And I think you're heading down the right path, and if you want me to stay for a vote, you got thirty seconds.
I, I assume that-
What a bargain.
That the information that, uh, this forty-five hundred dollars would buy us would have, would also, uh, enhance our knowledge as to other possibilities of development being feasible or not there. So I think that it doesn't rule anything out.
I don't see how that would be the case. I think it could be crafted so that it, it did include other alternatives, but I don't think, looking at this scope, that the engineers would be looking at commercial parcel viability or anything.
No, this, this, you're right, Allison. This forty-five hundred specifically to figure out the concept of housing on the site.
Go ahead, John. Yes.
Um, I, I would like to see this particular potential project looked at as just that. We read these documents, cause I just got the same two documents that, that Allison got.
And I didn't get them out of Allison.
Allison asked for them. I sent them to Allison, and John asked for them. I sent them to John. It would be more than happy to forward them to everybody else.
And-
Everybody will get them.
We then consider the idea of putting together a-
Right.
A, a middle-level, um, committee to start looking at, at, uh, various alternatives and options and so forth. So that the things would go a bit in, in parallel. But it doesn't mean we'd ever build this, even if it makes all the sense in the world, if this committee doesn't see other things coming into place.
Josh.
Does this vote have to happen tonight, or could it happen at the meeting that maybe we'll have next Monday night along with the capital planning discussion? Because-
And goals.
And go, because I've heard a bunch of things. Obviously, I support this, okay? But Allison did bring up a very good point, and I think that there's a way of getting, um, this to move forward simultaneously with reviewing, um, and a committee, putting together maybe another study as to what a commercial viability would be.
When's the next, yes, I think you might, I think it may not matter, cause when's the next FinCom meeting?
They don't have, I just asked. They don't have one scheduled.
So, so they typically would meet December, the first Tuesday in December.
Is it sometime prior to January?
Right, so-
I think that, that alternative would also give us the ability to potentially reach out to the engineer and see what more would it cost to have them look at conceptually, commercial, or, or, you know, kind of expand that a little.
And none of that's gonna happen this week if the, well, perhaps, uh, they work hard.
Not this week.
All right. So I, I've heard you, Josh, and I, I heard you'd like to table this till next week.
You got, you got a problem. The twenty-sixth is the same day, which is next Monday, that the CPC, uh, meets to go over the proposal, one of them, which is the one that, uh, has already been submitted. And if you have the forty-five hundred dollars in your pocket, it would make it a lot easier with the CPC.
I think that that's the kind of rushed decision-making that some of us are really uncomfortable with.
I agree.
Sounds like a valid question to me.
Oh, jeez. Let's have a, let's write it as confusing.
No, I just meant rushing it, that's all.
For, for next week, when the CPC meets, they're gonna give the initial feedback on just the two-page applications that went in. It was not even required, but a dollar amount, and it will not be until months and months from now, until we have to turn in a complete application and really define everything, and even then, no people will be back from the CPC. So, um, it's great that the two-page is already in there, that's enough of the whole place over.
Given, given that, that this is, uh, we don't have a meeting at FinCom and, and the CPC deadline isn't, isn't tangible for a couple of months on the dollar amount, we're gonna table this till next week. Assuming we have a meeting next week, to the next meeting, how about that?
Are we meeting next week?
Well, that's on the, and they've gotta discuss that next, so.
I'm in favor.
Somebody let me know.
All right. We'll let you know, Josh. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I don't have enough time to prepare for a meeting for next week, I have to tell you.
But if we, we've already figured out several things that we could discuss.
Can, 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 can I chair the meeting for a moment? Thank you. So there's a couple of things that have come up, and there's a couple of things that are business. And before we talk about having a meeting on the twenty-sixth, we're gonna talk about agenda items people want on the meetings. Because to date, I've been running agendas almost solely without any input from anybody else except for Josh. Now, I don't know if when the town manager sends out his request, anybody's giving back feedback to say, "Hey, how come this isn't on the agenda? Hey, how come that's not on the agenda? Or, hey, I'd like to see that. I'd like to see this." So I have a list at home of thirty or forty agenda items that I'm trying to paste together to see whether or not we can get them in, given the time parameters of things that come up that are necessary to cause a business. If people want priorities placed on those things, you have to communicate with me. I can't read your mind, and otherwise, I'm living in a vacuum due to my own. So if there's things that you want to discuss that are really high priorities, you need to talk to me about it. You need to request. You need to ask for some, for some, some visibility, or send it to Mark and, and, and ask for him to do it. Um, I, I'm not gonna sit here again and again and say, "Why is this on the agenda? Why is that on the agenda?", when you're not asking for these things. I always get to them. I put them on when I want, when I feel that they're, they fit, when I, when my priority's recognized. But I don't know the priority of other members of the board unless it's communicated to me. So my simple request is, please, if you'd like to see something on an agenda, just let me know. It, it's, it's, it's really easy. Or let Mark know when he sends it out, "Hey, why isn't this on the agenda?" It's not a big deal. It almost always comes up. And if I feel like there's not enough time, I might pull something else off in favor of that if it's a higher priority. So please, talk to me about agendas. Ask, tell me what you'd like. Tell me the priority of it. Tell me why it's, it's, it's important at the timing, and I'll, and I'll, and I'll make it, I'll make it important. Um, now that I've said that piece, um, who, does everybody wanna have a meeting on the twenty-sixth? And Mark, is it feasible that we can even have a meeting on the twenty-sixth?
Be a lot of work, but I'll get it done if that's what the board wants.
Okay. Uh, Becky?
So first of all, Barry, I'm sorry that I have misunderstood, and I didn't realize I was, um, actually supposed to be that proactive about sending, uh, agenda items. My suggestion for things that would not need a lot of Mark's preparation for next week would be that we discuss our power goals for the next year, cause, um, I know I failed to do any of that thinking before tonight. Um, and I know I benefited last year from a discussion when we did have kind of a workshop session where we talked about it. I think that we also discussed earlier the capital planning committee, and I, when, I was gonna ask where we stand on that. I think if we could, among ourselves, figure out where we stand on that, what we, what the next steps are that we wanna do.
Well, can I interrupt, uh, just on that point? I thought the board had discussed waiting to see the capital plan this year and then determine next steps after getting the capital plan, and we were gonna set a separate meeting, um, after the formal operational budget to talk about capital budget as well, and then take that plan and use that as a basis moving forward. I'm working with my department heads to formulate a bunch of information to help you make that decision. And so I don't know if next week you're gonna be able to decide whether or not you wanna go forward with the committee without seeing what we're preparing as a staff. That's what I thought we talked about.
That's not my recollection.
I know, Mark, that you and I kind of talked about that.
Oh, maybe she and I talked about it. Okay.
I thought that as a whole committee, we had kind of left it, left it that we would get lists of what needs we felt needed to be kind of met to Dawn, who could then, um, put them together, and we could figure out then whether this really was a capital planning committee we were looking at, or whether it was a-
Right.
Building feasibility, or whether it was existing facility utilization, or, or kind of all those pieces.
And I, I gathered a bunch of information-
Right.
And shared it with everybody around potential definitions and examples of capital planning, plans from several other towns in Massachusetts and one from, I don't know, Eric, Texas, in Texas, just to show, I mean, one of them's five hundred pages long, one of them's thirty pages long and everything. So you could see the range of, of what's addressed there. So I don't think we had decided we weren't gonna do one. I think we were still deciding if we are, what would it do?
Yeah, I'm, I'm reluctant to put another item on the agenda that goes nowhere, and we talk about it for a couple of hours, and we don't come to any decisions. And without that pre-work and that pre-justic position and a list of things, okay, these are the ten things that Becky thinks, these are the ten things that Allison thinks, these are the four things that John thinks, et cetera, and then we can look at that scope and say, you know, where do we wanna go with this? Either we do, we either take it offline and do a workshop, and it's not, you know, a part of a board's select meeting, cause we actually have time to do that, or we do some work ahead of time. We can't do it both ways, though. We can't just have a regular meeting.
Could we have a workshop next week and do that? Because to, to be fair, the, there was a proposal that did have a lot of pre-work on capital planning committee. It, it was, there were objections here that it, it didn't, that people didn't understand it and wanted more definitions. So I think that that's our next step. John provided a lot of material. Maybe it is a workshop session.
Well, considering we tabled an item that I believe we should address in a public meeting, um, and I told Josh that we would, I don't think we can have just a workshop session next week.
And, oh, are they exclusive? We could, I, we wouldn't take votes, I see.
A workshop is a pub-posted meeting where you do not take votes.
So if we-
Or where you, where the public doesn't, is not allowed to comment, generally.
Could we have a meeting that had that one vote and then, uh, the rest was workshop?
Is everybody gonna be able to get their input?
And what about goals? I mean, could we discuss goals in a workshop also?
So hold on. Let me respond, please. Um, is everybody gonna be able to get their input in by then? I'm not going to be able to.
Their input on what?
On, on what they want the capital planning committee to be on those items. We've got, I mean, Jo, Jo, to my knowledge, um, I mean, there's been several, several statements made about different opinions on this board of what they envision this committee being and how they want it to operate. And there is no, I haven't seen a quorum yet of vision for that. Uh, we have challenges in definition of what, what capital means. We have challenges in where do we draw the line? Do we care about cruisers? Do we care? Do we wanna involve all capital? Are we talking about buildings? Are we talking about municipal, you know, expenditures? Talking about, um, you know, potentially excluded debt? Are we talking about with the schools or without schools? Like, there's a lot of these questions, and I would love it if people-
So is that information that you're saying we haven't, as individuals, gotten to Dawn, or that you haven't seen it come back?
Well, I mean, Dawn would've told me if it came, if it had come to her, so I'm, I'm assuming both. And I don't need to see it, cause I would be, you know, I don't wanna-
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
But it'd be great if they were prepared in advance and ready for us to look at and discuss, or, you know, it'd become public as part of our packets, uh, at the same time becomes public to the public, uh, and therefore as opposed to the agenda item.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing that Dawn has received thus far is what Josh said.
Yeah, I, I, I'm aware. Thank you. Josh, John?
Um, I, I would like to suggest that it's a long holiday period. It's a chan, it's an opportunity for people to get their shopping done, slow down, catch up, and coming right off of that into a meeting on Monday night, which most of us would not have had the normal amount of time to prepare for. Uh, what's, you know, if we aren't gonna accomplish something, just getting in here and talking doesn't make, make a lot of sense to me. So I, I guess, if we have stuff we have to do on Monday, then we should meet. But if we're just looking for things to do on Monday at this point, I, I would say, uh, let's not cram something into Monday.
Well, I'm comfortable tabling items that have already been put on this agenda, therefore the prep is normal, yeah, no, therefore the prep is already done, and moving those forward to, to Monday. That makes the most sense to me. Adding new items at this point seems egregious to people's family schedules that may have planned to be gone for the entirety of the weekend. Allison?
So I'm struggling a little bit. I, I think that workshop idea is, is a good one. I personally would think that we should probably be having a monthly workshop in lieu of a formal meeting, because it, it is a different feel and venue to get a lot more accomplished. I, I share the frustration folks have that kind of, we're bringing the same things up over and over, but we're not actually making any headway. So I think we need to, to kind of try something different somehow, because right now, we're just trying the same thing again and again. So perhaps a workshop. Um, I'm happy, Barry, to email you kind of things that I'm mentally tracking and waiting for them to show up on an agenda.
Please do.
You know, my assumption has been that you have that master list, and then eventually they'll show up.
Eventually, but if it's not-
So I, I've been trying to kind of like-
Let me know, yeah.
All right, well, you know, we'll see when that shows up. Um, along those lines, you know, you made a, a comment earlier, um, that you feel I'm, I'm frequently bringing up the schools, so I guess we should probably have a, a workshop-type discussion around that.
I wrote it down.
Particularly, you know, to me, again, it's a, it's a process issue, and it's around making sure that the municipal capital plan and the district capital plan are, are kind of being dealt with similarly, not, um-
A holistic approach.
Um, I, I think that in terms of whether we meet Monday night or not, it doesn't really matter. It is, uh, you know, I share what I think was Becky's frustration a little bit earlier, that I've had that on the, my agenda for the last six months.
Right.
And to this guy, discover tonight, "Oh, we're not meeting next week," cause everyone knows that. That's how it's always been.
Okay.
It is difficult.
It was, it was stated at last week's meeting, but that's okay.
Monday, the twenty-sixth.
Yes, it was.
Mark starts the first of three days-
Two of us didn't hear it.
Of meetings with the department heads to put their budgets together.
Absolutely.
I don't know if everybody's aware of that, but-
Yes.
But that's when it is. And so quite honestly, his time on Monday is gonna be somewhat restricted because he, from a priority perspective, he's gotta keep that moving to make his December thirty-first date.
Absolutely, and I, I have no problem with, you know, I think that rightfully should be his priority. My frustration at this point is I've had that in my agenda, and I'm discovering now to what I thought was the first time that I didn't need to have my entire family kind of working around that meeting date.
Me too.
Which is-
I mean, I'm fine either way. I just, if we're gonna do it, and you've got stuff so that Mark doesn't have to send out a pre-agenda and, and so forth, and it isn't gonna take Dawn, uh, break time and personal time to put together a packet, um, fine, let's do something.
Could I propose something?
Sure.
Cause you just did say, Barry, that you want people to tell you what they want in the agenda items. I've said three times, I would like us to discuss our goals in a workshop session. I would like us to discuss the capital planning committee in a workshop session. I would urge us to think of, get across the hurdle of what the definition of capital is, and then might, we, we might be able to make some progress. And I think we need a decision about this money for the housing investigation. Um, I would propose that we put those three items on our agenda for next week, have the open meeting be, have the vote on the housing thing, and the rest of it be a workshop. But if we're not gonna meet next week, I am telling you right now that I want those things on an agenda. And part of why I think we should meet next week is that it seems to me that then we get into this, there's a lot of other stuff that has to happen in December, which is a very busy month for me. Um, and then we're into January, and it's all budget.
Mark, would you please feel file a, an agenda for next week upon which we will do our, uh, we will continue the matter regarding, um, the housing development of Groton Country Club property. We will discuss the board's goals, and we will, um, review the minutes from, uh, the twenty-second, the twenty-ninth, and the fifth. We're not prepared next Monday to have a capital planning. I'll, I'll put it on the next, available right away, but, uh, we're not prepared. And I, I prefer that be an only, only item on an agenda, because I think it's too weighty to have other things in the way. Uh, that should allow you to not have to do more than cut and paste a few things from the existing thing and minimize the work and allow us to make some progress on a couple of items. and allow us to make some progress on a couple of items on a day that everybody had planned to be here anyway. Is that acceptable?
Yep.
Is that acceptable to board members?
I'm just looking, just, I just went and looked at the last two years. We did not meet on November-
Yeah, it's, it's fine. It was mentioned last week, people didn't get it, people have made plans. Certainly no, no pain on my back to, 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 I mean, especially since we can just re-establish things. And why don't we go over the, the updates on the ongoing issues list and then we'll, we'll adjourn unless people have liaisons.
I was going to suggest in terms of next week's agenda, if we can do the, the country club and the housing discussion first.
Yeah, that's the point.
I'm not even sure that the town manager, I don't think he needs to stay for the select war goals beginning discussions. I think he could capture a few hours of sleep.
Yeah, that's a nice, you let, relieve him.
Mark is going to post a meeting and Dawn is going to put an agenda together with these items on it.
That's right.
And, and that's the extent-
That'll be the extent of that meeting, yeah.
That we, we can expect to receive.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
The only issue I have to update you on for ongoing issues is the senior center. I'm very pleased to report that the steel was delivered today.
It arrived.
And they've started erection of the, of the steel structure. So that's a major accomplishment. So the project is, as I indicated to you in my last update, moving forward as planned. That was a key point, yes.
All right, great.
That's all I have.
Milestone achieved, thank you very much. All right, is there, are there any liaison reports?
Yes, liaison.
Go ahead, and then I think we have a liaison for a commercial school committee member. So go ahead, Becky.
Yes, so we had a, a meeting of the Green Communities Task Force Committee, whatever we're calling that, I'm not sure. Today, we had two people from the state come in-
Sorry.
And give us some more detailed information. And we had several department heads there who would be, who, whose interests intersect with that. And I think we're going to be, at some point, having a, a little bit of an information session with this board to help everyone understand what this is and then have a joint boards meeting to have a, a presentation from these people from the state so lots of people understand what is involved.
Great, yeah, I, I heard that that meeting took place today. I know a couple of people were disappointed that they couldn't attend. I know this has the eyes of the committee on it and I look forward to, to, to more information on that. Marlena?
And the main, the main reason just to know and why to proceed with this program is that there is a lot of money available, grant money available for energy reduction programs. And other towns around us have made good use of that money and we might as well get in on it too.
Thank you. Marlena?
I just want to give you an MSBA update. Literally, I was late this evening about it. So December twelfth, they're going to be voting on the feasibility study. They designed enrollment certification just was completed. That's an important part of this. Basically, collaborative analysis between the MSBA and the district through various methods from considering how many people are, how many kids are being born every year the last five years, how much housing has been built, how many people are moving in, enrollment trends, all of that has been taken into consideration as well as MSBA, all their ability to project, projections. And they have agreed with the district in regards to enrollment projections and space capacity, we propose for up to six hundred and forty-five students. That would be key to the four, the four hour approach. Doesn't mean, to be very clear to everyone listening, does not mean that we are building a school for six hundred and forty-five students. It means the MSBA, if, if invited, feasibility study will propose reimbursement for a, for a project up to that magnitude. It doesn't mean we have to build one. If we could build an attachment to the middle school cell, we could not build a school off of it. But that would be the maximum as far as-
It sets an upper limit?
That, basically, that's the upper limit.
Thank you.
And they will use state lawn by square foot or by how many, per student.
Okay, great. Bud, do you have anything at FENCOM? Are you all set?
I'll start.
Thank you. Mark, I apologize, before we go, I'd like to add one more item next week's agenda, which is to discuss the December selectmen's meeting schedule, considering we have some holidays and there might be some questions or concerns and lots of people plan at the beginning of, excuse me, the end of November for the entirety of December. And that just hopefully should not take very long. Is that acceptable to everybody?
Yes.
Thank you. And again, you don't need to prep for that. Okay, thank you, everybody. We're adjourned.